All right. Well, we are all present. It's 6:00 PM. So I would like to call to order the Concord School Committee. Welcome, everybody.
It'll be about 6:30 because Concord's meeting before the region. So I don't know. It's been juggling it. No, probably our bad, Andrea.
You can hang out back there.
You're welcome to stay and just listen, but you don't have to say good table.
When it's time. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, Andrea.
Sorry. All right. So we will start with public comment.
I did that.
Did you? Carrie's on Zoom.
Oh, sorry. We have to roll call in because Carrie's on Zoom. So I will start. Anderson present.
Marano present.
Randy present.
Rankin present.
Next, we'll move to public comment. We don't have anyone here with us this evening. Not a surprise, given that it's a busy week. And I do see some folks on Zoom in the audience. If you could raise your hand if you have interest in chit chatting with us this evening or making public comment. Seeing none, I will move to our CPS capital plan. I don't have a tremendous amount to say on this. This is more something that I'm going to look to Bob and Lori to take us through. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Sure. Make sure that's. Just call it up on screen here.
Erin can pull it up.
Erin, can you call it up on screen? Maybe increase magnification. Okay, so thank you. So I'm going to start kind of walking through FY '24, which is the coming up quickest. The items we have on here. One of them, we added loading dock repairs at the Row. And talking to our facilities manager, Reshues, and looking at pictures of the place. It's tierated, and this is something we need to do in part for safety and part for not damaging items that we received there. Cost estimates, $1,000. Something we feel is important near term fix, just large enough that better to use capital for. We've had conversations with the community in the Thoreau area, and we've allocated $25,000 for the for the masket plan. These were previously allocated to carpet tile replacement. We've made some progress on the carpet tile replacement in elementary school buildings. So we're going to skip that in '24 and reinstitute it in '25.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Why don't we give you this one, and Alex and I will share.
Certainly, the community gave us feedback, but we had our own needs ahead of that to be named with the fire and playground needs and ongoing parking discussions and inability to just keep it the way we would normally want to keep it. It was time for a big picture look. We don't want to do things in piecemeal. The parking plan is temporary. We're doing a bit of a playground, not a whole playground. That'll go in in the spring. And there's just a need for an overall plan to be developed so we're not missing an opportunity or preventing an opportunity by making decisions in isolation. So that's the need for the big picture plan.
The next two items are the $50,000 reserves at PV and Sanborn for health and safety. Those are for both '24 and '25. And when a new building comes online, we'll sunset those and redirect that capital elsewhere. And then the large item is the Ripley HVAC upgrades, and this is $745,000. This is the allocation that we'd need to complete the work. You may recall that $300,000 was redirected last year from Alcott for this work here. The 300 was a just a number that was available. It wasn't necessarily representative of the cost of the work. And when this went up to bid, it turned out the cost was 1.2 million. A significant chunk of the difference is that the amperage to the electrical service in the building needed to be increased from 800 to 1,200, and that's a big chunk of the difference. There's also some supply issues with the conduit and the materials that the consultants we worked with felt it was a bit of a spike at the time. There's no guarantees that it comes down, but it's not expected to rise. But the combination of the 300,000 from last year and the 745 gives us $1,045,000. With the 1.2 million quote we have, we have a $100,000 green community grant that would cover 100,000. It's already been committed, and we anticipate 100,000 to 200,000 rebates from National Grid for the fact that since we use gas here, we'd no longer be using that. Fields workers and rebates, we estimate 100,000 to 200,000. So doing this would enable us to move forward with the Ripley work. Provide the electrical service we need to the building and provide the heat pump sources at the two, the four modules pods, two for our preschool and two for the ones that the Concord Children's Center would be baking. And that's our first pass at moving towards kind of retrofitting the building to sustainable. And it's kind of our big capital item for next year. The future years, as you know, things change. So we've allocated dollars for future years. I can kind of go over these at a high level. One thing I would have wanted to comment on in the elementary is we do have our first roof that's going to be coming off the warranty in FY '27, '28. So we felt like we needed to allocate some roof repairs, which can be significant. We do have ERU replacements as well at the elementary. Scroll down. We have Alcott sidewalk repairs and parking lot repairs, $50,000 each. In a big, you know, things relative to the number. We've left the high efficiency condensing boiler in for now. As you know, we're looking at feasibility study for Alcott that will inform us as to what our options are for a sustainable net near zero or net zero building. But in the meantime, we felt that we're going to have a need there and we need to put something into relative to a covered HVAC. There are other items on here that are minor, more minor needs though. I will also add that, you know, in the FY '23 capital, we do anticipate some savings on the parking lot work. And on the carpeting in the building, I had a state contractor that came in at a less than expected price. So those are two positives we have in FY '23 capital. So that's the high level overview. Hope that's helpful. Some new questions?
Any comments, questions?
When does the school committee need to move recommendation forward? Do we have a date for that?
Yeah, this would be part of the warrant deadlines, January 4th.
The third, fourth.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate the Thoreau being fifty to the void if it's going to repeat more all time?
I think personally, and I don't, we didn't really talk about this in great depths, but for now, it's a placeholder while we wait for the Alcott piece to come back, dissect and digest everything that comes there and start to talk about what we do next. I expect you're going to revisit that and decide what to do. Just naming the need seems smart. Yeah, yeah.
Court, can you speak into a microphone? I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Sorry.
Does my microphone reach you now?
Yeah, you're quiet. You're pretty quiet, but.
I have a following as this microphone. Do we have, there's not that round.
This should be taking care of the sound. Yeah.
At any rate. My question was simply because we went down the path of all time and we anticipate that that could occur again. We're going to get data that informs the.
Yeah, you know, Ripley's turned into a little pilot project, sort of not knowing what we didn't know. And to do just even the section of the building we're talking about is over $1 million in electrical upgrades. So I think it does give us some predictive factor towards Alcott, Thoreau, whichever school we're going to talk about. But yes, there's certainly more to talk about when we get that study back.
Yeah, and we don't have it back at this point in time. We don't have, we've had promises from consultants that we don't have dollars to go with. They have more research to do. So it's too early for us to, I think, make any adjustments or any recommendations here about capital plan. We don't know what the scope of dollars would be either. We have 100,000. So that's a secondary conversation that happens. What if they come back and say that it would cost more than we can allocate to? And that's a, it's a different discussion. The school committee here can't necessarily solve that.
You're looking at some carryover to our fiscal '22 to the tune of the number you just gave us, 300,000. Is the rest of it already committed?
The rest of it is committed. That includes work that we're doing on carpet replacement here. It's parking lot work. It was the Thoreau ERU.
So town treasurer should expect to close that part of it out probably this fiscal year, the last fiscal year.
We'll want to move forward.
Yeah, we often have monies that fall into another fiscal year, just the duration of the projects. Yeah, we track it and then they sync up with the town funds.
All right, thank you.
All right. So I imagine we'll be talking about this again. Oh, sorry, Cynthia.
Could you give us a little more of a timeline on the rest of the exam support?
So we talked to them today. We're going to be meeting with them again after the break in two weeks. They're looking into three, they talked about three technologies. I won't go too far into it now, other than to say one of them was something they felt like they needed to do some more research on. They learned of some capabilities that might be an option. And hopefully, they can get, they need to contact a manufacturer and do some research. I also asked that if they find, you know, can they find another school that is using the technology the way they're proposing? It would be nice to have a reference, and I don't mind being leading edge, but we don't want to be bleeding edge. So yeah, I would say we tell them we would like it sooner, but we also don't, we want them to give us the right answer. So we're pushing them. We were hoping to have some, a report from them, preliminary report in December. But at this point, we need to do a little bit more work.
And then in terms of the work, the RP that we're going after the Row. Do we know the scope of that RP? Because I'm hearing it's not playground maintenance.
So there's been, there's nothing decided yet. That's for you to consider is our suggestion of a master planning process at Thoreau. So that would be something, the scope would have to be decided among the committee. We'll give you certainly ideas and suggestions with parking and fields that need upgrading and other things, but that'll be something you help us put together. And then Bob's office will do the writing.
And then just in terms of the actual work at the school, has there been any significant work done on the outside of Alcott?
There hasn't been as of recently, but we can loop back to that. I definitely feel Thoreau is the stronger need. Yeah.
Yeah, the Alcott playground is small compared to.
It is, but Thoreau's story is they have Alcott's hand me downs from when that got put in.
Oh, is that true?
Yes. So we'll go Thoreau first and then loop around to the others. Yeah.
And there's a capital work to be done to irrigate at Willard as well. So Willard has.
At the Row.
No, Willard's had an irrigation on the fields, which we're finally getting to the last phase of, so.
All right, some more to come. Cynthia Moore?
Nope.
Okay.
Trace, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you. Karen.
Oh, Carrie.
Don't we just forget you? No, I'll pipe up if I have something. I don't have any questions on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Lori. More to come on that. Next, we'll get into our CMSBC discussion. I think we should just probably start out with a recap of all the flurry of information that's been going on. I think the big picture things that I think are really important, I think we all know them, but nonetheless. The school building committee and finance committee recommended a not to exceed warrant of 115 million for town meeting. Select board in their October 28th meeting put a warrant for 110, 110 million. Good news, on November 17th, the finance committee did vote affirmative action on the article. So, you know, obviously, they support it, which is always helpful when we have all of our committees aligned. On that same day, the 17th, the building committee met, and we talked about pursuing two different strategies. One is a strategy of what's called add alternates, which essentially is a strategy where you would seek to compile a list of building components that could be added in the event you got an estimate or eventually a bid that was underneath your proposed budget. There's an alternative strategy, which is a deduct alternate strategy, which says, you know what? We're going to put the building forth as is, and we're going to compile a similar list, but of things that we would take out. And that list is in a very specific predetermined order. Should the estimates come in over budget, our professionals advise that a deduct alternate strategy for various reasons is preferable. So the building committee is going to pursue that strategy of compiling a very prescribed and ordered list of components of the building that could be cut should our estimates or eventually our bids come in over the 110 million. So that work will commence at their December 15th meeting. Court and I will be. So that is sort of the, oh, the general update of sort of the state of affairs. Do you have anything else to add? The recap, if you will.
Not on that part.
Yeah.
On solar, I do.
Okay.
I continue at the building committee meetings to stress the need to push forward the coordination between the building committee and town and the light plant. Because we have a project that is independent but inseparable, and that is the solar generation. We're going to have a net zero ready school, but it's going to produce no power. The earlier number I heard was maybe 10 million coming from the light plant. More recently, what we've heard is it's going to be about 5 million for the PV panels themselves. Whether that includes all the steel to support them in the parking lot, I'm not quite sure. We know it's rooftop. We know that the latest plan we saw from Solar Designs calls for not only satisfying the school needs, but considerably more. So I think that's the quid pro quo, so to speak, that we're going to make with the light plant is to get all of this help, which is so, so essential. And in return, we're going to put more solar on it than the school needs to the tune of about 150% to the school capacity. One of the reasons I think that we need to work tight coordination is because we've got multiple jurisdictions, and they've been coming together. And we have a 2015 town meeting vote that puts all solar under the jurisdiction of the town manager. So we now have the town manager and the building committee and the light plant, all of which have to be coordinated. So I think we have.
Yeah, and actually, at our chairs breakfast.
Words to do here.
Yeah, at our chairs breakfast on last Wednesday, maybe, we did bring up some of the deadlines that we're seeking at the building committee, you know, just the warrant and certain things like that with Brian Folds. So he was eager to get back the light plant to talk about some of the approaching deadlines that we have.
Which I think Dave would try to share, did share out on at the last building committee meeting. He was on the meeting and gave everyone an update about that.
Dates at that time, though.
I don't know. I don't remember.
Share those with us. That'd be terrific.
Sure. Yeah, I can find that out. And then next, one, one thing I wanted to throw out to everybody. So at our meeting on the 17th, we haphazardly kind of uncovered that the select board set a ballot vote. So everybody knows you have a town meeting vote and then a subsequent ballot vote for the town meeting warrant article during February school vacation week. And I was thinking it could be nice of us to do sort of two things. One, maybe sort of, you know, a letter from the chair to their chair saying that we would, you know, request them to consider changing the date. And then just also saying, just because, again, I like, I like when people are aligned saying, and if you do change it, we support and back you on that decision. So I had thought about writing such a letter, just again, to give them support. Should they, should they undertake that? And before I did that, I just wanted to get a quick poll about what the temperature was here.
I'm not opposed. I do think it's important that people know that that date was something that apparently was determined because of the special town meeting vote, and then they just rolled forward. So I think everybody can own some responsibility.
Yeah, they just looked at the first available date.
Everybody who needs committee, we missed it.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody missed it.
Oh, yeah.
I want everybody to know that the select board was not deficient in any way, more so than I was or you were. And I think we have every confidence that the chairman is going to bring us to the select board next Monday.
Yeah, to confirm the date.
I think it's a fait accompli at this point.
This is the language of the warrant and to confirm the date. Yeah. So, so, yeah, I don't know. I was thinking if everyone could just show a quick show of hands, if you guys wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I think you'd say we appreciate their attention to this. Leave it at that. We don't need to.
Just saying, we'll support you should you change it. Yeah. All right, great. And then finally, this was just an idea I had sort of born out of the fact that we, you know, are just getting around eight years later on the region to paving the ring road. Thinking about as we pursue this deduct alternate strategy at the building committee, you know, at the conclusion of our December 15th meeting, I think we will have a list that will have a number attached to it, you know, whether it's 1 million, 2 million, 3 million, I don't know, of things that we might, we would consider removing from the building should the bids come in over budget or the estimates. And I keep thinking about how a lot of the things that that could and likely will get peeled off will be, you know, more deferments of costs rather than actual cost savings. Because it's, you know, I think we've exhausted some of those savings, like the true savings where we've cut. I don't remember the final number, but 2, 3, 4, something like that million. I don't remember what the number is. I apologize. To, you know, so that we don't leave future school committees hanging with two things. One, having to get this, these projects passed. And two, I keep thinking about is the financially responsible thing to ensure that they're done sooner rather than later. You know, and I even go back to thinking about, we had that facilities fees discussion at the regions that, you know, I forget, in 2020, oh, you know, we're going to, we can look at bathrooms for the high school. I think that estimate was like a million bucks back then. I'm wondering that what that would be now. My guess is it wouldn't be $1 million. So I'm wondering if there's some responsibility on our part to think about this. You know, we are not asking for any tier two, tier three, bigger projects. But would this be something, and certainly not something we would use for fun, but just in the event of the scenario where the budget comes over or the bids come over, to prevent future school committees from being sort of saddled with this work. It's certainly not something we would vote on tonight, but I thought it could be up for discussion. Again, just another thing I wanted to get people's temperature on.
So I did confirm recently that the green room is not, if we're out of the highest of that, it was never new.
All right. Well, then the facilities fees, you know, there are other things.
It's a good example. It's just not a factual one. There are other.
Finishing out the highest that we can move to boom as a regional school.
Well, maybe not yet, but I mean, I mean, we're going to have to look at the facility speed. We're not in compliance with code.
But that was, that was because we took bathrooms out as part of the CCAP.
Regardless. So what I'm saying is, okay, so maybe the example is poor. The sentiment is the same. We're basically putting, we're putting a scenario where we're doing deferred costs rather than actual savings.
So as you heard, a lot of people suggested the biggest cost is the fields, right?
I'm sorry?
The fields and the air base.
I think so. That's like.
So we could do that with CPA over multi-year project.
Well, yeah, we've heard that on Thursday. We don't know that we would get that money. We can certainly try, you know, try to. And, you know, I'm just saying, having a fail safe option, not to not pursue other things, but in the event that things didn't come to fruition, we would have a backup plan.
You were at the pin count, right? You saw the lower debt that's going like this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the town has many dire needs.
But that's why we're chatting about it.
Right. But I mean, I think the building committee needs some good work. Try to make things not off the leads. There should be part of the project, you know?
Alexa, where we're confused is even absent a conversation tonight, if the alt deletes allow us to proceed with the project, and if some of those deletes are unacceptable to this school committee, doesn't it fall upon us to solve it in any event? And is it premature to solve it tonight?
Oh, certainly we're not doing anything tonight. I'm just saying for the warrant. But again, I just think you have an opportunity to capitalize on known costs today versus unknown costs at a later date, and is that responsible? You know, that's all I'm thinking.
So you're saying like fields specifically?
Well, no, we don't have that deduct alternate list yet. So it would, you know, it would, I think we know the fields are coming on.
Right, right. And every school, you know, should be built with fields. I think we're all in agreement of that. And so this is just a way to think outside. Should this happen and should it get deduct altered out of it, then we want to back up on it.
Let me, let me speak to that for a minute if I may.
Sure.
Let's talk more generally about alt deletes first and then fields more specifically second. Alt deletes first, Alexa and I and Lori, the members of the committee, voting members of the committee, have been asked to submit our ideas for possible alt deletes by December 7th. So I think it's contingent upon everybody on the Concord School Committee to share with the three of us what you think needs to be considered.
Yeah, sure.
In terms of the CPC, nobody can speak for the CPC, but we can learn their sentiments because they want to have dialogue with potential applicants, and they want to give people some sense of what's realistic, what's not. What we do know is that the last week, they had to deal with unexpended money. What we have heard on the street multiple times is they don't have enough applications to satisfy the available budget. So this could suggest to us that we might be in a very, very fortunate timing. And I think the sentiments of the CPC committee would be favorable, but again, that's an opinion.
Right. Yeah, no, but I think you're probably right. But again, I'm just thinking backup plans for backup plans.
Backup plans. And I would go further and say. And I would go further and say uh something that was uh not ever deleted, just was never in the project, to my knowledge, was irrigation for those fields. Um, and uh even before uh adverse climate impacts on our fields, um I think irrigation was was a good idea for heavily used fields like that. So this is an opportunity perhaps to backfill that uh that potential problem.
Carrie, do you have anything?
Yeah, I um, I thought about, I thought about this a lot and I I, you know, first, first of all, I understand that this is like the such a massive undertaking, building this school. And it's the biggest capital project that our town has taken on. Um, and just having watched it over the last couple of years, it's amazing to see all of these committees and the administration and everybody involved, parents, families, community members, um, everybody around voicing their opinion on on how this should go. Um, and I'm just, I I I'm just really grateful for the process and I'm grateful to to everyone involved. Um, Court and Alexa, you too, Dr. Hunter. Um, and I I I know that there has not always been agreement on how we move it across the finish line. Um, and nor should there be. This is a massive undertaking, but I think we're at the point now where um we're we're cut, we're looking at making, cutting crucial aspects of the building, like, you know, like we're talking about the fields, but also like building a gym without seats. I mean, these are things in my mind that we know to Alexa's point, like, we know we're gonna need down the road. We're not gonna, we're not gonna in the long term have a gym that doesn't have bleachers or have some type of seating. So we're just afferring the cost, which only increases the cost of the building in the long run. Um, and I also understand that there are, I mean, the town manager presented to us all of the needs of the town. I understand that this is a massive, you know, a massive project. And it's um taking a lot of funding away from other other pro- projects potentially. But the, where I land is we are, we are committed. We all know we need a new middle school. There has never been a question about that. And the building, um, I, it doesn't seem to be at all extravagant. Um, but just a a really good building for, that will serve our community and our kids for the next fifty years. So my feeling is it would be, you know, it's the responsible choice is to actually think about what in this conversation, um, what are the the um, this conversation and future conversations? But what are the projects that are simply deferred expenses and and tackle them now because um, it's only gonna get more expensive down the road. I think we have the mo- the chance now to do the building right, and we ought to take advantage of that moment.
Thanks, Carrie. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to throw it out there for tonight. It's obviously not something we're making a decision on, but I just wanted to sort of, I don't know, socialize the idea just so that we had a at least a preliminary discussion on it. We can see what happens on the fifteenth at the building committee, and then we only do have one opportunity after the December fifteenth meeting for us and this group to meet again, really before the warrant closes. So again, I I, you know, I don't know where I land on it, but it's just, I think it's responsible to to talk about it if it's a viable idea and if it would be, you know, again, the sort of financially prudent thing to do. Um, so with that, I don't adjourn us, though. So with that, I would invite our car law members to join us, I guess. So we can open our car law meeting. Thank you, guys.
Welcome, everybody.
Hi, guys.
And we, yeah, everybody there. So I am gonna call the Harvard Car Law Regional School Committee to order, and I do think we have to just call us by roll call, because we have Carrie who is on Zoom. And just for the minutes, uh Erin, Ayesha is also on Zoom and Domingos is in the room. So um if we can roll call.
Anderson present.
Who's present?
Marana present.
Brady present.
Frank present.
We got Sharon in there. Right. All right. So welcome, everybody. We are gonna open up with public comment. So I will start in the room, and if you have a public comment, if you could join us at the table and we'll put you on a microphone. I see no one in the room. And so in our Zoom audience, if you have a public comment to make, if you can use the raise hand feature. And I do not see any public comment, so we will move on. And on to our student reps who are with us. I see Felicity's here and Harry's here. And I don't see Zaria, but welcome.
Oh, yeah. Unfortunately, Zaria said that she couldn't make it tonight. She ended up having a last minute conflict, but she's definitely gonna be with us next time. Um, so Felicity and I have a bit of a quicker update. Um, the first thing is just, obviously, there's been a lot of school spirit in the days right before break. Um, we have a photo of this later, but all the like clubs and various activities and things are all decorating windows in the cafeteria or learning commons. Um, the Powder Puff game tonight was tonight, so it's basically a football game between the class of junior girls and the class of senior girls, and the like varsity football boys get to coach it. So it's really fun. Even if you're not playing, it's fun to watch. A lot of people go just to like show their support for their grade, you know, just always fun to have like all school events like that. And then tomorrow, we have our first spirit assembly since twenty nineteen. Um, and that's something that Senate has been working really hard to plan. It's actually like built into the schedule for the day. So we'll have our first couple of periods and then go into the assembly. So that should be really exciting. And it's like our first one, as I said, in almost four years. I've never had one and Felicity's never had one. So it's gonna be new for almost like three quarters of the school. So that's always exciting.
Yeah. So in addition to working on this Spirit Week stuff, Senate has also been um doing like the district strategic. We ha- held the envisioning session for that. Um, so that was also, we had almost forty participants and it was really great because we got to hear lots of diverse student perspectives on like developing the um, on input for helping develop the district's plan for the next couple of years um from what students wanted. And it was nice to hear that, like, there's a lot of focus on things like students want more focus on mental health, for example. And then there was also some interesting things, like some people said, there was one person who said that they wanted um Greek salad to be offered as a lunch again. So there's some other interesting points like that. But, yeah, it was really great to have that conversation with lots of different students.
For sure, yeah. And we're working over like the next couple of days too to kind of comb through everything we got a little bit. We're gonna put together a summary and stuff like that. So we just want to make sure it's as accessible as possible.
Yeah, there were definitely a a couple of points that came up in like every one of the little like groups that we split off into. Um, also, quarter one ended on, I think it was Friday, the eleventh. So students have gotten their first grades of the year back, so we're definitely like very much in the swing of things now. And, yeah, only a couple of months till midterms, which is kind of scary, but.
Yeah, um, and then we were realizing we haven't actually met since the fall sports season ended, but the Monday after break, winter sports are starting. So that's something to look forward to. It's gonna run until March this year. And then Felicity, if you want to touch on the concerts.
Yeah, so we had um a chorus concert on November second and also band orchestra concert on November tenth, and that, and both of those went really well. We also had um senior district auditions this past Saturday. Um, and that went really well for a lot of people. There were a lot of acceptances and we even got um a number of all-state recommendations. So that was just a testament to like the talent um in the performing arts that the student body is, yeah, that the student body has.
Yeah, um, and this isn't on the slideshow, but we also, as like students said, just approved a couple of new clubs since we last met. Um, we now have a fishing club, a chamber music club, um, a club that's like kind of working to set up some tutoring, so lots of great stuff there. And we just thought we'd include some photos. You can see some of the windows in this one, so some of the decorations we've been doing. And then um actually in the cafeteria, a couple of days ago, Reverb, which is one of the like performing arts clubs at the school, did a performance in the cafeteria during lunch. So that was really cool. And this is just a photo of Powder Puff. You could see some of the senior class and their pink shirts and everything. So, yeah, all in all, I think it's been a good month, lots of things going on, and the school definitely seems to be feeling pretty lively.
That's great. And I think lots of school spirit this year. I have to say, Felicity, we have not seen you since the play. So congratulations. It was awesome. And she, what she didn't tell us is she was also the musical director of the play. And so this is the first time I've seen like a fall drama that actually had some music in it. So it was really, really exceptional. It was definitely a little bit, I won't say, um, it was, it was eccentric. It was dark. But it was also really funny, and I was in the audience on opening night, and there was somebody that was laughing really loud. And it was like an old school laugh track that kept on going on. So it was actually really entertaining. So excellent job on that. And and even with all the sports, Harry, I know I saw you on the hill at soccer. And it was, you know, soccer made it pretty far in the tournament, so all of our teams have gone pretty far, which is great, and we're looking forward to a Thanksgiving Day football game, so.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
You too.
All right. So moving on, we have Andrea Gillis with us for lifeguards and recognition, so we can just grab a chair and a microphone. Cynthia, can she just borrow your microphone? I may be able to just grab that chair. Um.
Yeah, Erin's gonna do the slide.
Erin's gonna do the slides, okay, but.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know from a microphone perspective, is that where? You might have to, yeah, we're on Zoom. You might have to, do you mind sitting in front of the microphone? Okay. Why don't we put you right at the end? Thank, thanks, Cynthia.
Well, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Um, yeah, it was open. Kristen had asked me to join because this is actually our fifteenth year of this course. And the last time I was at a school committee meeting was when I was presenting my staff award. So I'm coming, also mentioning now, Kristen is my immediate supervisor at CC. So she, I invited her to come and watch my, like, one of my lifeguard classes. And that particular class has just a bunch of characters, and I'll point out a few in that picture. It was one of the, um, you know, it was a great class, too. Everybody's been observing, great teaching, twenty years. My first time in pool.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah. I am happily happy with.
Do you want to advance? If you want to advance, Erin is behind the scenes at home. You can just say next slide, Erin, and she'll advance it for you.
Okay, thank you. So this is the timeline of the course that was developed. So um, um, and I'm in disagreement with Peter Allen regarding the last that we continued these ages, because I actually, what's the last term? But that's okay. And we started our classes in two thousand eight at the Beat Center. And because I've been here for so long, I was actually in the initial meeting to create and discuss the development of the Beat Center. So um it was nice for me to also have that time to do the work to create the course. We had other courses at the time, but this one particular course has outlived and is able um logistically to, so facilitated by the center and so on. So we have right now four grade ten classes, and I offered a grade ten. And when there's a a long, a high enough signup for grade eleven, twelve, I'll have that in second semester, which I haven't offered in a few years, because the numbers have been too low to warrant my my time in teaching to go towards those classes. So we have four grade ten classes that grade because one of the requirements is students have to be fifteen to take the class. Sixteen in Massachusetts actually work as a lifeguard. Many of our guards do work as a lifeguard. So we even continued through two thousand and twenty in our hybrid schedule, which you'll see a picture of it, which is it was a lot of fun, but it was kind of silly. Um, but with the support of uh the school allowing me to budget for an aquatic mannequin, we made it happen. So it was, it was a good experience for everyone. So that's uh approximate number of many students who have been certified and or recertified because I also utilize our mid-year exam week to bring back the current seniors who were my sophomores um a year ago and recertified them. So um again, it's just to to provide our communities with certified lifeguards. And right now, in the last two years, it's been a huge short, so I know that they are actively working. Um, next slide, please. Can you move it up? Thank you. So this is just what the Red Cross puts out. So this is the um, a national course. Anyone that goes through the Red Cross here or in any other state, it's the same course that they're required to take. Uh, I can't, I tell my students every year, my first time getting lifeguard certified, I was when you were, I was at age, and I have been lifeguard certified, you know, since then. They're, they're just nice enough that they don't say, and how long is that? So they get trained in the rescue skills at the BD Center, then we go back to the pool, we do our CPR and first aid. And um their certifications come to fruition anywhere. And some kids who turn sixteen early may start working. I know the Beat Center at this moment is in dire need of lifeguards. So, you know, they, they know the uh, the aquatic director is Mary Hong at this point will come in and speak to the kids and just put a pitch in, being interested in someone, and some will love the extent. And then that helps them in their pursuit in some of the other recreations. Next slide, please. So here are all the different places that I'm aware of that our lifeguards have worked at. We're all over the place. Uh, one of my students last year actually worked at St. Paul's Camp in Canada. She was a local citizen. So they're, they're, and they are grateful needed, and I hope that they are well-prepared and hear good things from the aquatic directors, that they are, that they've been good employees and so on. So this course, it's been, I feel fortunate to get one of them, because it is elective at at grade ten and then with the line of eleven, twelve. So students not only have to have a high enough swim level and skill in that, and in terms of Red Cross, that equates to a approximately, a proportional level for a swimmer. They also have to have the discipline to be able to relieve, see, so they just come to the pool, get ready, get in the pool, do their thing, go and change, and make it back to school for the next class. So I tell them right from the start, you know, any of you might have this this the swim level and the skill, but, you know, you really want this. This is something that you really are willing to dedicate yourself and stay with, because you could just stay at the school and you change a lot from a physical gym and have a much easier day of it. And so the ones that stay clearly know what's going to happen. It's um, it's very opportunistic. I love teaching them and. Next slide, please. So these are some of the things that they must do in order to pass. It's a semester-long class, so we take about a quarter and a half um at school because our practice sessions are approximately thirty minutes, sometimes thirty-five, if they can get over there early. Or if it's a uh beginning of the of the day, walk like A or an end of the day walk like H, then they can stay a little bit longer. I know who has to take the bus and who has to go back to the school for athletic competitions or another other activity. So you stay as long as you can, but it works out to be about thirty, thirty-five minutes of actual practice time. And then there's the academic component to it. So they could take this class, and the BD Center right now is offering free lifeguard class because they have such a diet need. But prior to that, the class was costly. And I'm not sure that many fifteen-year-olds are up to the challenge to just follow along with the online blended learning and then show up and do the skills. So I, you know, again, I like the way that I I just spread the class out over the semester. So it brings the kids along at a natural pace for them, sophomores, and they're learning, and um they do well. So in our first test, many of them had to retake it and find as part of the process. They took it, eight percent, they're still on track in search of things. So uh, so far, so good. I've had a few kids who came to the class who did not have the right or the higher level of swim ability, and I gave them the opportunity to want to stay in the classes. Go a little harder outside of class and stay with me and, and um I think two chose not to, and three chose to stay, and those three are working towards danger. And they are putting in extra work. One's a member there, and I'm doing swim belt training, and they're working it because they want to, they want to get certified. Yeah, so those are the requirements. Next slide, please. Okay, so that was our hybrid learning. So the kids had to wear masks in the water, and then when they went, I think they could take the mask off. Then they came up and put the safety mask back on. And this was our mannequin and simulates.
Sounds awful.
And, you know, most of the kids in the class don't weigh nearly a hundred fifty pounds, and the the shoulder joints just don't work. So it's a little hard. So this student is actually holding the victim up to allow another student to come in and make the rescue because they.
It's just, yeah.
They did it. They were good. It was deceptive. Um, and we got through it, that's all, the best I can say about it. And I don't know, there was a big two mannequin. And I don't know, there were maybe two mannequins that are just sitting in a back closet now at the center. I'm not sure what's going to happen to them. But they're there in case, in case something else comes up like this. And that was a class from two thousand twenty. Next slide. And then this particular class was last year. And this class developed a team cheer, my stable hats on three, maybe cheer. And, and I won't point out anyone in particular, but it's a very diverse group. Learning style wise, as well as, um, swimability wise. And they just came together amazing. I had a student here that was senior, and I was asked if he could join the class, and he did. The student had many learning challenges. And the kids shared a welcome to them, but it was wonderful experience. And, and you look at this crowd, and you could never see one kid that doesn't belong there. Because they were, they were just tremendous. But they are in the very pool which you want, very happy during the past year. Next slide. And so the, the next steps, I'm, I'm hoping to be able to get to my next level of certification so that I can then certify another health and fitness teacher. That would, that would be something that, um, I would love to be for our community to do this course. So I'm working, so, and I have, I'm working on people that I work with, too. And hopefully it'll all come together when my time comes. And that would be a goal. Yeah, to do this course, knowing that there are lots of that's not many places, not many physical education programs are able to have a aquatic program. Don't have the facility or the, how you fit in and so on. Not to mention ours is across campus, you know, so it's working. And did I get a couple more slides here? I'm not sure of my, my latest one, but no. All right, well, I had a couple of slides from my current classes. They were, when they heard that what I was doing, they were insisting on that, that I got them.
We'll be sure to send them to the committee.
One reason I ask in the society today is because the leadership team at the high school, all the department chairs, has a tradition of sharing good news. And there was some point last spring where Andrea kind of won the good news sharing because one of the students that you had trained actually that week had saved a life. Been working at the pool on him to the board base. And she was an elbowing in, and he got about halfway out of the pool, and she recognized something was wrong. And by the time she got over to him, he collapsed. And she said, you know, Mrs. Gillis, I never believed you that. I would just like everything to kick in. Next thing I know, you know, who's that person? It was me calling for an AED and calling for backup. Someone called nine one one, and she brought her mask out of her hip sack. She actually went into CPR, prepared the person, and bore the AED. By that time, other people had come, her aquatic director, she was at the time, she was sixteen to go. So she did a lot before, did more advanced staff and came in to support her. And, um, yeah, that went by. So, yeah, and that, that's not the first story that I've had, but it's, that's the bigger picture. That's, that's really why I continue to do this. I spend my summers at the lake in my town, learning that program. I don't, anyone can have that experience, drowning, you know, all the drowning.
That's great. We're lucky to have that program at CCHS. I mean, really. And you, you have other lifeguard trainers in the audience here, and maybe a former student is also with us of yours that I didn't know. So, you know, just a couple of little facts. And I should have mentioned that Andrea is the teacher and the department chair of health and fitness at the high school, so.
Yes. And she's all, I'm halfway through my third. Excellent. So, I mean, you're bound to have a student who can hear you.
When did you like start working there when you were like twelve?
Yes, definitely.
You know, I remember my students last year that the Mrs. Gillis, his mother had was my mother. And we're both teenagers. And you can tell from the preference by even, yeah.
Well, yeah, when I saw your name on the agenda, I was like, no way.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
All right. Um, onto our minutes. So you should have the minutes from the October twenty-fifth meeting. And are there any comments before we approve those minutes? No? You want to make a motion, Alexa?
Sure. Um, I move to approve the minutes from our October twenty-fifth meeting of this year.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay.
I'd love to just peek at them, give me another fifteen seconds.
Okay. And we are going to vote this by roll call vote?
Very delayed in opening, but I did look at them prior. Happy to put you ahead.
Okay. And just as a reminder to our members, you will be roll calling for both if you sit on both committees. So roll call, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
I believe in Wilson, I for region.
Great, okay. I need to remind myself to do that sometime, so sorry about the public reminder.
I appreciate it.
Um, okay, and then on to our correspondence. Did you have any at CPS?
I don't think we did. No, and I organized it really well.
Yeah, okay. We had two at the region.
We were copied, I think, a couple of times on the February.
On the what? Oh, once.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 that, and obviously that didn't go to the region.
CC'd on a few things that had gone to the building committee.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then at the region, we just said two. We had, um, Betsy Levinson from the bridge, and we had a parent who shared the video of the concert. And just as a reminder, the Prism concert is December seventeenth. And I think that was it. All right, so on to our chairs, liaison superintendents reports. Start with, you want to start, Alexa?
Sure, I'll start real quick. Um, okay. So first order of business or reporting, a, a bunch of us went to the MASC conference. I don't know that that's happened recently. You know, I think everyone who is sort of paying attention to our year, this year, can sort of see some emerging themes, which are sort of a renewed commitment to best practices and continued learning. And the MASC conference, I think, is just, just sort of demonstrates how committed we all are to that. So several school committee members attended fully or partially this year. Some of the highlights of the sessions that I thought were worth, um, sort of highlighting that some of us went to were, um, a session on the electrification of bus fleets, school committee roles and financial oversight. I think Sarah went to the unique challenges of regional districts. That was one of them, right? You went to? Oh, you didn't?
I think so.
Um, and then, then just. I thought we went separate ways when you were going to that, but I guess it was something else. And then another thing sort of worth noting that, you know, of course is so obvious, but just sort of worth saying, you know, the morning sessions were, um, sort of meant for all to participate in. And sort of the two topics that you would expect were right there. And they were, um, sort of DEIB initiatives in schools and, um, mental health. So, you know, I think about that, I think about our goals. I think that, um, these are just sort of universal, um, priorities that are, um, with school committees all across the Commonwealth. Um, Sarah?
And one, uh, so, so I went to, I went to vote tech one, I went to a couple of, yeah, one, a couple of ultimate acts of assessing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that was great. Oh, and, and patients. I wanted to say that the common thread and all of your things that I don't have, communications, was a focus of all of the school committees and all of the schools in terms of messaging both in and out. They, at almost at all of them, they talked about, like, the importance of student, uh, student surveys. They talked about how to have assistant messages through all of your, you know, channels, through the whole system, like, you know, the school committee, the registration, the teachers, especially when you're, with, um, you know, the mental health stuff, have everybody on the same page using the same language is important. But I thought that was interesting, that really, and within, you know, that was a common thread, everything.
Definitely.
But no one has a good answer. That's the, that was.
Isn't that, am I? Isn't that great? Yeah, and then, again, I, again, I think the alignment with our goals, communication, DEIB, mental health, I think is really, um, it's, again, it's sort of just telling. With that, one of the things that I wanted to do, I'm realizing, I looked back, I mean, we approved these goals two meetings ago. So I get it's a little premature, um, to be sort of doing, uh. Oh, yes.
I was there as well. It's important that we're there. Um, I thought one of the most, the best segments I went to was Kathy Lobes, who wrote this book, which I recommend to everybody, who's a DEI director and was her co-author and her chair, who believes that the principal of the North. Um, it was a really moving session. Um, and she has many details on dealing with incidents, all of these we've been talking about throughout the whole. If you're, I don't know how long to spend that, but I recommend it highly.
Great.
Is, is Henry the superintendent in there now?
No, he's still.
Principal, okay, so he was in Bedford, then he went to Newton. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Awesome. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we all found a valuable. I don't think, I think, yeah, I remember driving down, oh. But then you get there, and it was really, it was energizing and, and, and every session was like truly worth it. So I'm glad we all went, it's great. Okay, so I wanted to do, if everyone would indulge me, just because, um, look at the goals document. Our tracking document is attached to the agenda. You know, what's nice about this document is it does sort of demonstrate sort of where we are in things. It keeps an eye on what we've started doing, what we haven't started at all. And even in some instances, like, what, what we're going to be able to say, you know, we, we've, we've achieved this goal. But, so if we go through, you look at our coffees, that was, um, goal one A under our professional practice goal of communications. We, Tracy's going to give an update on our coffees in a bit, but I thought that was a worthwhile endeavor. We'll, we'll commence those, um, in the winter and then again in the spring. Really hate this goal of doubling the distribution list, but it's still there. You know, we're, and, and we will work hard to do it. We are, if you've noticed Lori's, um, weekly updates to the parent community have started. Uh, linking to our subscriber distribution list. Um, we'll continue to leverage, uh, her social media as well.
Kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So for number two, we're looking at doubling meaning about another three hundred and fifty people.
Yes.
Okay, just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're at three ninety-one.
Oh, we have more.
Chip away, we're, we're, we're chipping. So I looked to two Ds. Sarah, I think you emailed Tracy about this, too. We were talking about, um, trying to figure out and examine other school committees' best practices, how they're communicating, again, internally, externally. You know, I know one of the things that I looked at, like in my free time this summer, you know, Acton has a really, you know, we do an agenda overview document that Sarah and Cynthia started last year. They have a really interesting document that I've looked at for, just as an example, like, this could be cool. Should I try to utilize this tool? They did share it with me, they were gracious enough to do that. I have not utilized this tool yet. Just a different way to sort of communicate internally about agenda setting or the agenda itself, for example. So I didn't know if anyone, Sarah, I think Tracy said, might have volunteered, um, wanted to express interest in taking this on. I know, um, I did some work on this this summer, so I'd be happy to do that with you if you meant it. And if, um.
Yeah, I think, I mean, as you said, we had the MASC conference and see how everybody else. There's stuff that he was, he said he could take something from that and there's stuff that you know that.
Right. Or that might not work here.
It was great for them, but with.
Right, yeah.
Right. But it is, yeah, they're.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the other thing is, um, we talked about, there used to be a school committee roundtable that, but did you go to that from EDCO? The EDCO one?
You went a few times, Sarah, didn't you, the EDCO roundtable?
Yeah, so, because even last year, when we were looking, um, to add our MECA representatives, I had called, you know, around to the four districts that had MECA representatives to kind of, you know, get a feel for how did you do this? What does it look like? And I think it's helpful to meet with other school committees, and maybe Dorothy could be helpful. You know, I always want the goal of like hosting some type of like local area workshop-y type thing with Dorothy. So maybe working with her on that and try and recruit people to come here, and we can show them what we do and find out what they do. And I think that would be great, so. To add to our goals in there.
So.
I know, I know, that's the only problem. It's more meetings, that's okay.
And so I don't know, I think formally in our policies, that would make us a working group, which is something that is like a defined charge that has a specific mission, and you kind of work together, and then you conclude your work, and it's over. It's not a subcommittee. So I don't know, and I think we would, I don't know, all look into how we formally organize and figure that out.
There are.
Yeah, I think it's a working group. There are different ways that, um, you know, when people are doing work outside of our session, then.
It's really just an appointment here among the committee, and then you make sure you post.
Yeah, the meeting.
Do all the formal processes.
Yes, yes.
You have to post.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. So, um, do we want to just get off and running and look, would anyone be opposed to appointing Sarah Wilson and Alexa Anderson to a school committee community, or and anyone, actually, and anyone else who might, anyone else want to volunteer to join our class?
I would kind of like to volunteer, to volunteer, really, I can't help myself.
Okay. All right, so what shall we call ourselves? The Communications Working Group? Okay, let's do it. So I would tend, yeah.
If I joined, does that make, is it too many people? Or no, does it matter if it's a five?
Harry could join, I'll, I'll bow out.
No, 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 that's okay.
No. I don't know. Do you know?
Go to court.
To court.
It's a concrete forum.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, Tracy, do it.
No, I can snip out, it's totally fine, you can do it.
Yeah, you should.
Do it.
You want, okay.
It doesn't have to be, so for working groups, it has to be fixed. Like, does it needs have to be fixed or cannot be fluid? That's the whole thing.
I don't know.
Dump in and out?
Basically, conserve one week, but.
Participate another week?
Oh, okay.
You guys should do it, Tracy, you do it. I, I will happily step down.
You sure? Now, now we're, um, yeah, why don't we just vote next meeting? Yeah, we're not going to get anything done. Yeah, good point, Cynthia, thank you. We will, um, note to put the next meeting's agenda because no one's doing anything the next week over Thanksgiving. Um, all right.
Good.
Uh, yeah, so, oh, and then, you know, you'll see if you guys cruise through this goals document. It sort of keeps a status. Oh, and then the other thing, I think, um, with respect to, I was thinking, we were going to do a check-in with our facilitator, Rob Evans. It, we, back in August, we seemed like November seemed like a great time for that. And I feel like, A, November's come and gone, and B, November's so busy with budget. Concord specifically has so many evening meetings, I think Court and Cynthia and Tracy and Lori and I, I've seen a little bit too much of each other after dark at other people's meetings. So I'm wondering if this might be better coinciding with like our, our mid-year kind of goals assessment, which I know we're kind of going to be doing a little bit more, but, um, and going into the winter timeframe. So I think that's. After April, like at the end of the year.
No, January nineteenth.
After the January time.
Oh. Yes. Marvelous. Yes, I totally concur with that. So, you know, if everyone's comfortable with that, I just think it's busy right now.
Yeah.
We are busy, so, um, as long as no one's missing Rob Evans too much, I think Cynthia's idea of aftertown meeting is probably when we're going to get to it. Everyone cool with that? So those are the big highlights. Oh, note the third highlight. Um, Tracy Novick is, is one, also a busy lady. Um, she's been hard to schedule. She can come, but not till the end of January. I was just wondering, like, do we, is, do we still think that's worthwhile, having her in that timeframe? Schedule her up. You guys are okay? You, what?
It's a lot, even though we've passed the
Yeah.
I'm gonna use a lot of budget.
So, yes. So, um, yeah, it'll be same time, late January, early February for her.
Yep. She, and I think she's available on January twenty-fourth.
Okay, great. So we'll probably put her in there. After town meeting.
Again, after town.
Um, okay.
Are you ready for me?
Can I just, a couple of things?
Sure.
I think I thought I mentioned them before, but maybe so you risk serving, I don't see that on our list. That's a pretty important.
On the data list?
Oh.
Is that even?
On the goals list.
I wonder if that was an oversight, cause I think we talked about it, like an oversight on my part and putting this document together. Oh.
But it says here, we have a, yeah, we don't have it last, but we have the results.
Play the results now.
Yeah.
I haven't seen the results, so.
All right. Whatever. Yes. I mean, they're public, but they're on our website. Right. Yeah. It's on, they're on our list. It's disaggregated, cause I do have looked at the aggregate data Emerson. disaggregated is on our website. Okay. Does Carla have theirs?
Haven't talked about it yet.
And then the other thing.
I don't see them like.
The big ones.
Yeah.
Your administrator's side. I do math. And then seven, eight and ten, it's, uh, six, eight, nine, nine, twelve. Okay.
That's a lot.
Good. Um, and then the other thing is reviewing the school in
Did we?
Do that. We talked about, yes, and we talked about maybe having a committee to do that.
It wasn't on the goal.
No, but it's not on the goal.
On the goals.
Yeah, we need to do it because of that.
Yeah. All right. Yeah.
It doesn't have to be completely redone.
Right, right, right. Good point.
Updating.
Yeah. All right. Well, um, so I got time to do that.
Yeah.
Awesome. That's it.
Right. You're good. Okay.
Moving on.
All right.
Passing the
Can I move on? Okay. So, um, we've had our, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very brief. Um, we've
Do you have a question?
Yeah. This is chair still. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, chairs first. Sorry. Um, we've had our coffees. We had a Carlisle coffee. We had two Concord coffees, one during the day, one in the evening and a coffee in Boston. There were some common themes that came out of our coffees that actually kind of line up with our goals, which is great when this happens. Um, things were talked about with student achievement, communication, building community. We're coming with some of the common themes. And we got some great feedback from all of our coffees. Um, anyone else want to comment anything on the coffees? If you attended, do you think I've covered enough of it?
I think we, we use in Boston. In the presentation. Um, we had a very small turnout, but it was a very engaged one. Um, I interpret some of the things back to include, uh, might the, um, school community or administration look at the Mecca director reporting structure. Um, we heard included, um, and also advocacy for, uh, more attention to, uh, Concord to Boston exchanges with all the efforts to bring Boston to Concord. Could we revisit some of the, uh, the, uh, efforts in the other direction and rebuild those post COVID? Uh, references to our efforts to rebuild trust generally. Um, and then specifically about coffees, some ideas about how to further improve, back to communication, further improve our outreach on the coffee. So we can do, try to generate more participation.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we, we had, the most people showed up at the Carlisle coffee. You guys had, I think, nine people, right? Concord, we had three. Boston, we probably had about seven. And I think that, you know, if we offer another round of coffees in the winter or the spring, probably the spring seems more, most appropriate. Um, continue to do the same outreach. And if anybody has any other ideas for outreach, do that. I do know that in Boston, they actually, um, Tanika went through the list and made phone calls too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she did. So, you know, we were doing a ton of, oh, it looks like Ayesha's in with her hand up. Go ahead, Ayesha.
She muted.
Yeah. Oh, I think, so I just think that, um, like, like the coffees were really good and it was, um, I know I said this at the Boston Coffee Hour, but it was eye opening. Um, it was eye opening and kind of scary what I think Mecca kids go through on a daily basis. Cause what I had to go through and the comments that were made to me by other Concord and Carlisle families, but and these are, these are adults that should know better. And it, it bothers me, like, it's scary to think that. And like I said, I said this at the coff, at both coffees, that, you know, the issues that we're having, especially at the middle school, start at home. And that's why, you know, I suggested maybe some more like social type things where, you know, we can rebuild that trust, like Court said, and we can build better, um, you know, better relationships. And we, we can show that Mecca families are made up of work, you know, hardworking, intelligent young people and not, um, what, you know, this, this negative, um, stigma, I feel like that some people think that we have.
Agreed. Thank you. Um, okay. So we can look forward to more coffees, which will be great. And I think, you know, I, I do think some of the things we talked about too, we'll work on at the, we talked about to do it at P T G president's meeting with all the P T G presidents and to see if we can build some of those things back in again. Cause some of it is not school committee's responsibility. It's more of, you know, P T G and, you know, parents and teachers and the parent teacher group. So
And I will say, I think in those P T G meetings, I observed many of them last year and then this year, there's, um, a perceptible shift in, um, the like sort of enthusiasm and engagement on the P T G side. Now that there's this perception of, um, you know, sort of getting over that COVID hurdle. So I think if you're gonna get some real big shifts, this is a good time to capitalize on that sort of renewed sense of urgency around community building in general. Um, I think this has been a theme we've seen um, in those meetings. So I think it's well timed.
Yep. Um, so that was it for coffees. Um, Alexa, Lori and I had a meeting with Verizon. And this, it just the background on this is there was a meeting way back in 2017 about, um, potential cell phone, cell, a cell phone tower on the, uh, regional campus. And there are definitely some concerns over, I would call it, you know, safety at the high school in particular. I don't know if you want to comment on.
Story after story.
If you can just briefly comment on that.
Yeah, students in crisis outside and we can't call nine one one from, you can text nine one one now, thankfully, but, um, it's time we couldn't call. We can't pull up Aspen. We can't call for help inside the building. Really scary situation last year that, among others, but really challenging environment. So I think we need to look at the option Verizon's giving us. We tiptoed with it a little bit five years ago. It was, I think we all thought the town was gonna be able to activate more effectively through no fault of anyone's. Uh, but the opportunity's still there and I feel really strongly, we need to, to consider it a safety issue.
Yeah. And I do, you know, this is not like, you know, parents can't text their kids. This is police and fire can't communicate with each other. They can't communicate with people in the building. If there's, you know, an incident, maybe on a bus, you're not near a landline or whatever. So if you've been at the high school, you kind of know the situation.
We called, we called, we called for help from here yesterday because Katie Stahl was outside and could only text me. So it's, it's ongoing.
It's ongoing and it's real. So we are, we are exploring that. So the next step in that is that Verizon will do a site visit to determine possibilities on the campus and they'll get a proposal to us. Um, and it would generate some revenue. I mean, that is the other piece of it. So we will keep you updated on that. And then the last thing that I had really was our, yeah.
Nice question about that.
Yep.
With whom at the town, coordinating visiting telecommunications?
Yeah. So I submitted with Carrie and talked also with, um, Marcia Rasmussen. There's a number of them who are very also actively engaged in talking with Verizon. Verizon ideally wants two towers. One at the high school and another one to cover downtown. Um, so we're staying synced up. We're both in the early phases of figuring out how to activate. Obviously we need your endorsement to do that. Um, so it's a parallel conversation right now and we'll continue to be in communication with each other. Yeah.
And the other thing that the gentleman from Verizon did say, which I was surprised at from sort of the commencement of a proposal, if you will, that he would bring to us to getting this done. This is a, this is not quick. This is a two year kind of process. So, um, and I know the town has some urgency around the, um, celebration. They want some, um, so I know, you know, they have some urgency around it too, but, um, you know, I think a joint effort is again warranted because to get proper service in the town, especially as you get influx of people, um, for the 250th year look, you, you need some.
And obviously we're aiming to benefit beyond the high school. I was at Emerson for the Alcott Turkey Truck and realized I was completely off grid. No cell, no texts, no, nothing. It was completely a void. And, um, the Alcott administrators brought their walkie talkies to communicate with the school. And I thought, where? Twenty twenty-two, that's the best we have. So we'd love to have everybody benefit.
And it should also be noted that Middlesex has one on their campus, uh, and they had a similar issue and they were really concerned about safety because they had no coverage out there on Lowell Road. So there is a tower. If you want to take a little trip, you can see what it looks like.
I have pictures. I could.
Yeah, we have some pictures.
What does the partnership look like? Is it like, is it, do they lease property?
Hold on, Carrie. Sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Carrie.
Oh, I was just, sorry, Cynthia, I can't hear you very well. I think your microphone might be working. So sorry if I spoke over you. Um, I, I was just wondering what the partnership looks like. Do they lease property? Is it like, what do they, what does it, how does it work?
Uh, well, we, we can get into a little bit more. This was just a very high level gist of this. Um, but basically they build the tower and they pay us with that, would like, there's no cost to us essentially.
We have a lot of homework to do.
We have a lot of, yeah, this is very preliminary.
Very.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not even. Yeah.
You mentioned, you mentioned money being, uh, albeit secondary, still significant here. Did they give you a sense of magnitude?
They did, but I think it's too early to kind of say, the way I look at that, that's always your first offer. So I think it's too early to say exactly what the money would be because it would be Verizon and then other carriers would also, um, generate revenue.
So you're privy to it and we'll learn at some point.
No, it's not that I'm privy to it. I just think that this is really early without having a proposal. It was a conversation.
I was just asking if they gave you a general sense of the magnitude of the money.
Twenty to thirty per provider on the tower.
Annual.
Annual. Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Sorry. I didn't know if I should be like, I, I don't have anything written in front of me. I'm not gonna say he's gonna hold that. Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't dream it that way.
No.
But these conversations are happening in, you know, thousands of communities around the entire planet. It's not anything that's too, too touchy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've heard that number in other settings in my personal life. So I think it's kind of their standard number.
Yeah.
If you want to put a good negotiator or put Bob on, he's pretty, pretty tough with.
I always think there's more money to go and try to ask. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Right.
All right. Um, and then my, the last thing that I had was just on our January third meeting. So our meeting is January third. I would ask if people, um, could hold that as a potential, if we needed, it would be a budget only meeting. It's really, it comes right after break and posting is challenging because of the timing. So what I would propose is that we have our regular business meeting on January tenth, um, which would be the following Tuesday. And then just to, we'll keep that third in there if we need it. If we don't need it, we'll cancel it.
So we would meet the tenth?
The tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. And the third we hold.
The third we hold. Is anyone opposed to that?
Not opposed, just a practical question for Lori and Bob, um, given the fact that, uh, you want to enjoy a few days of holiday, as do we, um, are you gonna be able to get material to us? Okay?
I think that's why we're suggesting moving to the tenth. So we're not all squished into that week between the two holidays.
I'm really hoping we don't need the third.
Yeah.
And it really will be the tenth, but the third is kind of a just in case. You know, we don't know what December looks like right now. It's a just in case meeting.
Just in case and we'd have forty-eight or seventy-two hours to study your material.
Uh, you'd, yeah, I think by then you'll be so far into the budget process, you all have had a month of budget and you'll know what's left to discuss. And hopefully it's short and sweet because the warrant closes the next day.
The next day.
Obviously, six and the twentieth of December.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yep. So those don't change. So it would really just be adding on the tenth. Okay? So I think Aaron's at home. So Aaron, if you could add that. Yes. Yes, exactly.
Ideally.
Yes, ideally swapping the third for the tenth, but I'd just like to keep a placeholder just in case. Okay? All right. And then that's all I had. So on to our liaison. Oh, superintendent first. And we haven't talked about.
You can do liaison.
First, and then we'll go to you.
Okay.
All right. So let's just go around the room for anyone that had something. Court, do you want to start?
I think I can be quick. Um, one, uh, Carrie Rankin and I, I believe, uh, Carrie, you too have received, uh, some messaging from Kristen in regards to strategic plan. And I wonder if, uh, Kristen, maybe you're the one to look to for this. Um, you're asking that each member of the planning committee talk with their constituent groups. Should that include the school committee? Uh, because it's actually to come back to us at a later date. Um, or do we sort of conflict the process? I can't remember what we did before.
Yeah, we come back now.
Okay.
With the draft plan and then you.
Fine. So if we have other constituent groups, it can be a value finding, but the school committee is already at the center. Thank you. Um, number two, uh, for pencil only, it looks like the Concord will receive a group of students and, uh, town officials from the N I Japan on, uh, October twenty-eighth for a very short visit next year. We can spend as much time in Boston as they do in Concord. A lot needs to be fleshed out, but they've already shared that, did a very initial date. Oops. It's what? Um, and, uh, just by way of community news, I think of importance to the school committee. On December fourth at two P M. At the Fenn School, the Human Rights Council will, uh, have a reception that will be de facto a recognition for Police Chief Joe O'Connor just before his departure. Um, and regrettably, I'll be out of town, but putting together the P R for that this week. Um, it'd be wonderful if we could have some school committee attendance.
A reminder. Please.
Yeah, I will, I will get a reminder to you. And Tricia, I think that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Um, who else? Just something. Sharon, do you have anything? You have to, no? Okay, Sarah.
I'll report, uh, briefly on the season. Um, everything's great. Good attendance, so the events, um, drugs ad is great, but make sure you get your flasks reserved. Fluffs are always and that's sort of all that is worth there. Um, and then we, we could call a lot.
Yeah, do it. Yeah.
Uh, so we're thinking, makes sense, a little bit of what's going on in Carlisle, but so you guys have a sense of it's worth having you joining, creating. Um, and so really, we have our school committee, uh, coffee that was very Carlisle focused. A lot of, I mean, to your point, a lot of stuff that is not under school committee review, but again, share with great, um, great recall, um, doing a little breakdown of everything. Then the big cutter is communication, right? I think it makes sense offline to talk about more of the specifics. Some are very Carlisle specific concerns. Um, there was a concern about the safety without cell presentation rate. That was, that was so not any really surprises, but some actually some interesting athlete asks and requests, um, but not that much of a conversation. And then we had our school committee meeting two weeks ago where we also looked similar to this. We looked at student achievement. Um, so we looked at Emma Cass, we looked at Timmels, we looked at Starr. Um, we put, I encourage everybody to watch some Carlisle school committee meetings every now and then just to see what's going on with the different factors, stuff that's that come in. But if you're only gonna watch one school committee meeting from this year in Carlisle, that would be the one because it covered everything. It covered the achievement and, and the, and the school improvement plan and the budget. Um, and so it kind of is a it's a three hour long meeting, but it's, uh,
It's worth it.
It was.
It was October or November meeting.
This was our November meeting. It's the day after our last.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thanks.
Actually really helpful. Thank you. Thanks. Actually really helpful.
And I think that's all. There's no reports from the GIP.
Okay, great. Keep us posted on that. Thank you.
Hear from Ryan. They're getting all their budgets in like the next two weeks. So I'm sure once that happens, we'll hear from you.
All right. Cynthia, you?
So I just came back and uh, I was in Carlisle looking past and I wanted to give a shout out to our um, member Sharon Witt, who has been pivotal in launching my new student newspaper called the Mas, you know, Mosquito. And it sounds really incredible because she did bring it up. It looks so good. So you'll have to bring one nice time to see it and feel. So, but everybody was so excited. And they really just like, it's in their own thing. We don't really edit it or, you know, tell them it's not right. Or there was an article about the best candy sign. That's what I wanted to see. Um, so thank you very much, Sharon. Um, we have a lot of things on. Uh, should we just go to the guideline last night? We need to get it right. So the total pool, as they call it, was 3.63, which is a full percentage point of where they usually want to be at five four. Um, so it broke down as five percent for the town, 3.3 for CPS and 2.4 for the region. Did I get it right? Okay. Um, but that took a long time. That was not a quick decision and they worked very thoughtfully on spreadsheets. So I thank them all for their hard work. Um, did I miss anything from that?
Yeah.
I think that was the.
They were focused on one thing and that was what they were doing.
And I, I guess what struck me is it does seem like a very inexact science, but I had to remind myself that, am I right? But, but I had to remind myself that a lot of independent work went in prior to that. And uh, so it was not performance art last night. It was us watching them live.
Yeah, I know.
Trying to, trying to bang their heads against this thing and come up with, with some clear answers by way of guidance.
And I thought there was a very good presentation on capital, not, not your free capital, but the other tiers of capital. Um, and they were sort of warned or suggested that they let's see, for the PEG access advisory committee, we're beginning the process with our consultants to review our franchise agreement, which is the 10 year agreement. She gave us the eye opening number that the agreement has worth $63 million, the Comcast's 10 year agreements. But we have, uh, you know, it's, it's not um, nothing. And we have some leverage in terms of when we get some things with that.
So sixty three is our consult, Congress consultants projected Comcast revenue.
Right.
Of which we will take some negotiated percentage.
Right.
Not to exceed five percent.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, but that was interesting. Um, the Climate Action Advisory Board, uh, they were talking about, um, they have final candidates. I have not heard anything that they hired as director.
I have not. And they reposted and had a better pool and that was the last I heard.
That's what, that's what they said.
The sustainability director. Yeah, yeah.
So that's one of my new carries, um, which must go. They're very eager. So they're kind of looking, waiting for leadership. They did have some discussions about what they called school committee sustainability. And so you can expect, I didn't joke, say that.
Whatever, yeah.
Um, but Brad said that was good, I think. He's now a member of it.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Um, they also talk a lot about transportation, um, trying to reduce all, trying to all single. They said the mile and five mile, Chris, our best, what is bringing the far as amount of having emissions, increasing bus ridership and increasing ridership of all kinds of alternative, not school bus, but kind of other transportation. Because cars. Sure, we'll agree with, um, yeah, that's the least.
Okay. All right. Carrie, I don't want to leave you off online, but your camera's not showing. So okay, so I'm sure she's with us. I don't think she has anything else.
She's coming back. She's.
Coming back. Okay. All right. And on to Dr. Hunter.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll just offer one specific highlight, I think mostly. Uh, last week we launched the three hour workshop for all of the ninth graders. Um, so ideas came in and led that one team at a time. Uh, and I don't think we can say enough that it exceeded our expectations um, in setting a stage for kids to feel like they have open avenues to talk about inclusion, know more about how to handle incidents and respond and be upstanders. And just in the feedback we got, we had a really nice email from a parent yesterday naming that her child had been a little reluctant to go or not as engaged, but by the time it happened was. Um, it came home and just reported that it helped her as a student feel more included and helped her understand kids around her more. And I think, I think that's ultimately our overall goal is that kids feel more welcome and connected at school and um, more accepting and welcoming of others. So it was a great launch. Um, thanks to CEF for funding that. Uh, you'll see, we've got to talk with you as sustainable fiscal piece of it and what we're going to do for that. But um, really great inaugural launch with the ninth grade. So it's a good couple of days.
It's great.
Yeah.
I know some of us have ninth graders who attended, right? This is great. So we got the feedback on the other side, which was great, really.
Really, that's the feedback we want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Us thinking it was great is less important.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, and I even have a friend whose child missed it and was going to reach out to Andrew to see if there's any type of, you know, she's like, I really want my kid to be there. And is there anything that we can do at home to like replicate that? Cause kids were out sick and.
It will be hard to replicate.
Yeah, you can't.
But we'll think on what we might offer. Yeah, yeah.
If there's anything out there, so.
Were our own teachers involved?
Um, the ninth grade teachers were. Uh, they stayed with the teams. So there's your ninth grade academy at work. And uh, that I think also helps to build transferability because in classrooms, kids and teachers were together and now make its way back to the main classroom.
And guidance was with the team too. So it was teachers and guidance together, which was great. So, great. All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to our discussion, capital needs at CCHS. So this is just the very beginning of a discussion about our campus. Um, you have in your agenda overview, you have the information on the previous campus advisory committee and that committee had about seventeen people on it. There were students, teachers, administrators, members of the community. Yep. So if you went through all of that, the town leadership's there, everyone was in there. Um, and they did some surveys to see what would make the most sense for things at the high school. And they had some recommendations. So, so that group, they got together, there was a report that was generated. And this is where I get a little fuzzy because I'm not really sure what happened at the school committee level.
You want to storytell?
Yes.
So it was a camp, it was a subcommittee of the school committee. So it wasn't just an ad hoc group. It was a very formal group. Seventeen, eighteen years. So this is as the landfill is remediated and finally going to be available to the campus. Um, plus the road was a big discussion as well. And then the assessment of the other needs of the campus. So that seventeen, eighteen year, that committee that you just described, did a lot of data gathering and input gathering from the community to determine the priorities for the campus. The road and parking at the time, which we'll put off to the side, but the road was always the top priority and frankly became the stumbling block because until that got done, which it's just now going to get done, um, all the others went on hold. So there's a, a list of other priorities that were named. The two biggest ones, I think that we probably leave floating around would be the still lack of compliance with the restrooms at the stadium. And that landfill space, which a few years ago, we thought maybe a track would be an awesome thing to put there. Um, so that's where we are, I think. And that led from that group, that first twenty seventeen, eighteen year to a more um, actualized group, the second, eh, second, my second year, that's why I keep saying that. Eighteen, nineteen was another subcommittee of the school committee um, that then worked with Gale Engineering to get a feasibility study done. So we actually have schematics of the campus and how things could fit. Parking was in the discussion. So that's in there. So there'd be some editing to do and we'd want them to revisit the numbers, of course. Um, but there's a lot of work done to really try to analyze what the options were and if the priorities could all be met, or if we were going to have to pick and choose. At the time, they could do, they could do everything, including parking. So knowing we're not pursuing that, it all fits. That's the bottom line. Um, there's some reconfiguring to do with the skate park that would have to get looked at, whether that would still fit. Um, it might actually now without parking right there. So it would need some refresh, but I don't think you'd have to do a do over. Um, there was some reasonable amounts of money put to that. So it would be worth using as a starting point.
And this is not for a warrant article this year. This is just a very preliminary discussion of like, let's keep moving forward and pick up the work that kind of got put on hold. And I think that again, COVID loves to just jump in there and kill everything and kill all our fun here. But I think that we need to start thinking about finishing up that high school campus. I do, you know, uh, some of us spend a lot of time down by the football field and I know there's discussion about bathrooms and things like that, but we're really, it is really problematic. There's not a ton of lighting. Picture a porta potty at night when someone is in there. So just, that's just food for thought. So I just want to open this up to a little bit of discussion and options of how to maybe move forward, which is maybe, you know, what I would suggest is if we can look at that Gale uh, report and if we can have Bob and Lori reach back out to see what would it take? How much, I don't want to say how much money would it take, but like, what would it take to refresh that report a little bit and see what's still feasible on the campus? Anyone has anything they'd like to add to that or?
Yeah, Cynthia.
So we need to reach out to the live board about solar, because this is their favorite site.
Right. And the solar, well, the solar on the rooftop that, so I should have backed up to say that the first two things that were on, you know, that charge was solar on the roof. And it was the facilities building. So, yeah, so that would be. And what?
They also liked the field.
The landfill.
The landfill fields. And I understand they like that. And I guess I'll, yeah, reach out to them. Yeah.
Don't let them get too far down. I mean, they wouldn't obviously without having a conversation with us, but.
And I do think we have to go back to the wishes of that committee too. It's like, look at the solar on the roof and that field, you know, there, there is definitely a need for a track. There's needs for other things on the campus that the campus is requiring for kids. Reach out and do it. Yeah, yeah.
It's just, they see this big open space sitting there, you know?
Right.
That we don't probably have any plans for. If that's not the case.
I'm not even sure it's viable because you can't permeate the cap on the landfill, but it's another decision.
Yeah.
So I just don't want it to get too far.
No, 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 no. Yeah.
It's a very tender site.
It sure is. A track, nice and.
Tender side of landfilliness.
Yeah.
I just want to look back at some of the conversations that, you know, I didn't, I don't, I didn't specifically about this stuff when I was, when last time we were talking about the uh, painting. I wanted to get some good background.
Yeah.
And the archives of mosquito are.
Yeah, Sarah does a good job.
That's a good point. Okay. Is it searchable? Like is mosquito searchable?
Something about mosquito is it's not indexed, right? So you can't look on Google and or any search engine and find, so like it is all housed.
In there.
In its own website.
But then searching there.
And then searching there is great, but they don't allow access from World. Look how.
Four. Okay, okay.
And then just type in Google search dogs and then you can toggle them by theme, by relevance, whatever.
Cool. It's probably friendlier than the minutes and all that other stuff.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really, it gets to the heart of it.
Yeah, right. The point.
Right.
Rather than every seven.
If there are recurrent themes that, that goes, you see that reflected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you use that to dial back to meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Confide meetings.
And even, so what we learned through our building of our school committee drive is our minutes are now searchable within the drive, which is now my new favorite thing to do is you can type into that. Because you can't search our minutes on the website, but so I didn't put, you know, the past five years of minutes on, but that's a longer term project is to get more minutes onto that drive. Yeah. So then that it becomes searchable for what you're looking for. Cause it is actually super helpful. So.
Yeah, the whole drive, anything on it searchable by keyword?
Unless it's in like, maybe if it's in.
If it's in a PDF, it is. But that's why we're trying to keep everything out of PDFs. It's all interactive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that was really, you know, just the start of our campus discussion and.
Yeah, just one other piece, um, because we've looked at the CPS uh, capital plan. For a little while after the new school, we had a five year capital plan, but really it was leftovers of uh, VE stuff and little things that needed attention. Um, we phased that out because we either decided they didn't need to be done or we did them. So there really isn't a five year plan because the building's so new. So right now we're still working on fixing things when they break, maintaining new equipment because we're seven years in. I think you're going to hit the 10 year mark and that's going to start to change. And we'll start to bring you projections. So it could be these next few years is a nice window to look at the campus where you don't have a lot of other maintenance to do, which is ten to fifteen years, you're definitely going to start to have to do things. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that affords us to do some phasing, do some pressure on the town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was the issue with the HP AC for the enigma not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a short answer, right? AC issue.
Is what?
An enigma. Yeah, I think it's disappointing that we had that kind of issue with a seven year. No.
No.
That was, how much was that?
I don't have it up till.
Yeah, I don't know the exact figure. I, I.
Over thirty, thirtyish?
Oh, that's.
No.
It does read, just so you know, it requires a crane to fix. So there's a day coming where it's going to look like a major fix and probably it's not as major as it looks. We haven't had the crane. It got postponed. So.
It's just AC.
It's just AC really.
No.
I hope it's not a prediction, but in my last building, a lot of each unit's had ten years. We had replaced. It's a lot, lot smaller than initially did. Um, the cost was a lot less. So, so yeah, we might get to the 10 year mark.
People look at it and they say, you know, it's not looking so good, right?
Okay. All right. And that brings us to the data presentation. So I'm gonna, we have been waiting for this. I want to turn it over to Kristen.
So Carrie can actually join us up here. And this is probably my favorite year of presenting all the academic achievement data for you guys. Because um, I have a partner. I have a nerdy partner.
And can you introduce Carrie to the whole committee in her new room?
Um, Carrie Jerkate is um, our academic coordinator with the great um, insight of the school committee. Last year, we were able to hire her. Um, because if you remember Bob Barrie, fifty four year veteran of the district, he hired, we out, we allocated some of those funds. Um, and hired Carrie from the middle school where she was a science leader and department chair. Uh, and worked with the end department through the curriculum voucher that we went through. And you're going to be seeing some results of that. I want to look at the science stuff. So um, and Carrie, and to even more of her desire, she like, as we were meeting about this, and she gets more and more excited as the meeting goes on and most people their eyes sways over them. Fun to have somebody to look at all these matters with. So we um, gave you this presentation and uh, ahead of time. And there are sixty slides here. So we want to um, give you all the information in slide form. We're not going to talk about everything that's there. Uh, although we're happy to speak to it if you have questions. Um, so we're going to present on twenty of the slides. Um, and if we could just ask, if you try to hold your larger questions to the end, um, and if there's further questions, we can follow up after. So our agenda is to do five things. The first is to look at our data for the uh, achievement of our students for English Language Arts. Second is mathematics. Third is science. All of those are MCAS data. Um, we'll look at CPS and CCHA tests and then overall um, how our students fare and then how our subgroups fare. And fourth, we'll talk about the access test, which is the yearly test of students who are English Language learners. Um, and fifth, we, and finally, we'll talk about uh, the SAT, ACT and advanced placements that are taken by our high school students. So I'm going to take six things away from this presentation today. Uh, the first is that um, COVID and the pandemic have profound negative impact on student learning in all areas. Um, and that's true in Massachusetts. The way that we know that is that uh, you contrast the twenty nineteen scores or pre pandemic to twenty twenty two scores, the ones from last spring. So profound, I think there's been lots of news reports on this. This is a national trend as well, but also seen in Massachusetts. Uh, in this, um, very troubling, the trend is magnified among historically marginalized. In this, very troubling, the trend is magnified among historically marginalized populations. So our, our students who are identified as students of color or low income, our English language learners or students with disabilities are across the state were disproportionately impacted, negatively impacted. So you'll see that the downward trend is deeper for most shadow population in the state. So yeah, another really big thing to notice is that younger students were more negatively impacted than older students. So if you look at the second, third, fourth, fifth graders, you know, the kids who were just learning to read and learning to read for content, for example, were more affected than kids who are stay in high school. So that was all true for the whole state and for the country. And number four is that the negative impact is reflected in our local data as well. At Concord Public Schools and Concord Carroll High School, although it is not as profound as the state level. So what you'll see is sort of the first half of a V on all of our graphs. So going from 2019 to 2021, you'll see downward trend. Students cannot did not get as much learning in as their predecessors at that same age. Number five is the good news. So by 2022, last spring, we were seeing a bounce back. So from the learning loss, meaning the graphs actually look like a V. So most of them, where you see it going down from 2019 to 2021 as the first side of the V, but then backup for 2022. And many of our populations actually have recovered to pre pandemic level. So that's great, great. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is that to protect student privacy, particularly among our subgroup, we list data by percentages, not by number of students. So part of our subgroup could be one student or two students. So they're very, very recognizable. If you pull out like a student who is a black male student who may be on an IEP at say eighth grade. That's a very recognizable kid. So we don't actually protect student rights.
And I'll just talk quickly about the student growth percentile. A lot of our graphs are focused on that. And it's sort of a strange concept throughout your mind grounds. The student growth percentile is a number that measures student achievement over time. And they are being compared to a cohort of students within the state that scored similarly to them the last time the test was given. So if a student has a growth percentile of fifty percent, that means that when they took the most recent test, they scored better than fifty percent of the other people from their cohort. From that same cohort from the last test. Does that make sense to everyone? It. So one of the things that I think is really worth realizing, first off is that in 2021, because the, the test was so different, I think it was more excessive than 2020, they used a nebulous different calculation that is not comparable to the 2019 and the 2021, uh, 2022 SGP strat. It does certainly show a downward trend. Kids across the state did not do as well on the 2021 that say, I'll be this year. But it's not a direct correlation. When you're looking at their SGP scores now, I would more compare their 2019 SGP's to their 2020 SGP's, which is what I live in the graph. And do keep in mind that a score anywhere between forty and sixty is considered moderate growth and above sixty is higher growth. And you see that many, many of our subgroups are scoring in this higher growth range generally that we use for is moderate. All right. So this is our first historical overview, looking at the district wide grades four through twelve. E L A data. You can see the state proficiency. It's a dotted line. Concord proficiency is the green line. And then this is shown 2017, 2018. So you can see certainly from 2019 to 2021, a downward trend. And that they continue in E L A into 2022, work at the state level, much more sharply than at Concord level, a little more shallowly. You can see that compared to the state, our students are still doing very well despite that downward trend. And certainly when we had a, that's a good whole group thing on this and something that expecting that was sit down the level at and start from the beginning of the session, see the, the in E L A, it's a pandemic had a severe. If we break this down a little bit more by, by subgroups, I chose to have you look at raises that shows how the different subgroups were impacted and how they have bounced back since 2019. You can definitely see much sharper increases in some subgroups than others, but you can see that everyone has had this bounce back. And some, some very sharply even back to pre pandemic. Our IEP in five oh four subgroup had a dramatic bounce back. And I think it's really amazing to see that they, they came back to a level that's even higher than their growth percentile was in 2019. And they are narrowed their performance gap. Those low income students are showing a similar trend, but are, are still catching up in the severe. Students. And I thought that Yale data was very interesting. Our Yale students generally show a lot of growth over time because they are grooming the language from year to year. So they have very high SGP's. You can see that, you can see that the pandemic had a severe impact on that for our Yale students. And then they had a very strong bounce back and have nearly now achieved where they were pre pandemic and then fully expect this year that that's also very.
Right. So now we're getting into the math historical data and this is good, good news, even better than E L A, which is you can see the bounce back that being upward side happening. And for all of our students, they, the MCAS in that, so that's third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and then tenth graders, we score an average of thirty percent higher than we see there. So we're really, really pleased with that. So here is again the same subgroup of looking at different races and how they fare on the map in the past. So as you can see, we've seen a really nice bounce back. Definitely went pretty low for the 2021. That's a decline, but very quickly bounced up. And so excited about this. I think part of this is attributable to the calculus project that was leading the middle school. So we can see that very clearly.
In the CCHS, looking at the math and fast data, I just thought it was a nice bright spot because you can see that the even some IEPs and five oh fours are really closing the proficiency gap by the tenth grade level. And again, their SGP is really mirroring, if not surpassing, the students that are not on IEPs and Bible course, which is showing of effectiveness of a lot of. Science is a nice bright spot this year. See that despite pandemic, our students really did very well, even in 2031. And then eventually continuing to, but accent score. So our SGP is calculated for science. They're only calculated for E L A and math. But that's something that's. You can see that, that overall it's actually a bit of a period.
So now we're starting the fourth part of the presentation, which is just looking at the access test, which is how our mutual numbers there. They always fair, very, very well conquered. And you can see that's, that's no different this year. So eighteen of our students improved, increased their level. Eight of our students dropped in their level. And that's about what we've seen in the past. We're really lucky here in Concord and Concord Carroll High School to have fantastic staff to work. And so we really try to get students to jump one, two, or three levels in one year. And so that's pretty neat.
Looking at the college readiness data, first data point we looked at where that was the SAT performance. And this just breaks it down by subgroup and just shows the averages. So I'm sure you all aware of that in case some didn't. SAT is scored out of eight hundred points each of the sections. The national averages for reading, holding and for math are in the five twenties. And you can see that all, all of our students. It's well, well, that's, well, that is national.
Can I just ask a quick question on this one? How does this? How do the SAT scores compare to previous years? Like, do you find the same slump and then followed by back to, back to normal? Or where are we?
I, I honestly didn't look at that. That's a great question.
We're happy to get back to you.
Yeah. Okay, sure.
And I just have a follow up question on the numbers of students eighteen. So we see a. Situation. Yeah. And then this will, it's by, I looked at it briefly. This is by the year. So they, they used to do the graduating cohort, but then in 2017 or something, they just said, okay, this is the year. That's innovation.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And there's a lot of juniors want to be done by, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
But I will look at the SAT historical trends as well, score trends as well. The ACT, keep in mind it's a much smaller sample size. I think fewer students take this. The, it scored out of thirty six points. Actually, I think that's. Scored, look at you until I look. Scored out of thirty six points with a score of twenty nine, which was our composite average at CPHS placing students in the ninety first percentile. Can see as well about the national average composite score, but the nineteen. So currently as well.
Yes.
That's a really.
So if this message, everyone should be taking the ACT.
Include science.
Yeah.
The SAT doesn't. And you can see from all of our science scores how strong we are.
Right.
It actually has a step category in some ways as well. I suck.
It does.
Yeah. So and I attribute that to two things. One is I think maybe eight years ago, we did a science curriculum. To align ourselves better with the national frameworks, the new frameworks for science. And what we found really was that the elementary level, we teach less life science and more physical science. So we do a lot more with new sports. Screen lab, kids doing hands on pieces. So I think that it's a building over all of the years. So we should take the ACT because we're very strong in science.
Yeah, interesting.
Very northeast in this SAT versus the ACT in the rest of the country.
Yeah. Isn't it weird?
Yeah.
That's been forever.
Yeah.
Advanced placement. This is great. So the AP advanced student scores, I just, I, I pulled up a couple of things that come back to me. First off, the ninety one point one percent of the students that take this score of three, four or five. It's extraordinary.
They passed, yeah.
Um, and pass, pass well. So this, our AP classes are certainly preparing the students well for the exam. That said, there, they take, there's twenty five, twenty six different AP tests that are taken. And I did know that last spring, a hundred and fifty of those tests were in subjects that we don't have. Or is this, yeah, they were in the arts, they were in the English, they were in, they were in social science. And so our students are taking our regular positive, then choosing to maybe study a little run side and take tests. We may not be able to, if you notice a lot of this, being taught that. I also thought this number of AP tests spoken for students depressing. We look back that that sixty two percent of our students take more than one. So. You get right down to a degree solicit.
Yeah, that number concerns us.
It was still pretty.
So in summary, we saw the. Profound loss that everybody did in twenty twenty two. We saw it in our marginalized student populations, still for large, large student population. Here in Concord and across the state and across the nation. As I said, younger students were more impacted. You can see this particularly in the area of English and arts. And although we saw the impact of the pandemic here in Concord, we didn't see it as at the state level. And we really, you know, I want to pay kudos to you, the school committee, also in our administration and our teachers. Because a lot of this, I think, was having to do with the fact that we came back in person for learning. We know from our data that in-person learning was more effective than Zoom or Upwork learning. And when we came back in September, some of our other districts, similar districts did not come back that early. So we're really excited because we really see this bounce back. I think I showed you with the star data from, from last spring, so we, for the fall, we've seen a lot of great bounce back. We're very, by that. So kudos to everybody for working so hard. In terms of next steps. So we want to continue to look at the trends and patterns that we see in the data. Each school has a data team, so they're looking at their specific data. I mean, you have that protocol for doing that. So we want to join that and to determine if there's gaps in student experience or gaps in curriculum. We want to turn our student data to make sure that those who put in a partial in meetings or not meeting performance level, that the interventions that they need. So what we're doing is looking very carefully through the empty as a process that in both classes is on the board that I didn't describe at a previous meeting. But you know, it's not just that a kid is struggling in reading and what they need to have some extra time on reading. It's that there's struggle, struggling in anemic awareness within the area of reading. And so we remediate in that area. So I mean, I will tell the staff that are remediating in that area where the kid really has the need. So we want to continue to do that. We want to continue to use data with teachers to inform their instruction. So even if they don't have an identified E P, like I just described, what, what does this class need more of? Can I do more of in my class? Number five is very exciting. So to make the data more accessible for teacher use in the classroom, we are building new data platforms. Carrie and I are working with a team of twenty five educators to design this data platform to make it more powerful for teachers to use and stuff them. And then given that, we want to continue to train faculty on what are the most effective methods important on for using students so that they get the highest improvement they can. And you know, we want to be really clear lastly on what our grade luck benchmarks are. So we are. So we are shooting for shooting in that at every certain uh point along the year. Uh, and how quickly uh and effectively can we get in there during the high school grade group of whole benchmark? That's lovely. And lastly. We really wanted to say thank you to everybody because um we wouldn't have been able to not dip as low as everybody else during the pandemic and have a big bounce back that we had without everyone bringing up today um for our students. Uh, and we especially want to thank our educators, our administrators. And we also want to thank our parents and guardians because I think during the pandemic, they felt like teachers. Uh, I mean, it did times when the bathroom was hot and so forth. So it really took a village and I think we uh weathered this pandemic, um, weathered this storm better than most.
Thank you. I was not a great pandemic teacher. Seventh grade math was not my friend for some reason. I was I was being challenged by that. Um, does anyone have any questions for Carrie and Kristen first?
Well, it was very, very clear. Um, the next steps imply uh work to be done, but you're telling us that actually much of this is underway right now.
Yeah, and a great point because um I think looking this carefully at the data helps us to pinpoint what could be strategic objectives for our um new strategic plan. So for example, you saw some of the subgroups. Um, I think we could, we could set a goal of having our subgroups match um our whole student population in the five years. I think that's a beautiful goal and a team.
Sarah.
A question about the uh part about the year expect bounce back is going to be new. The amounts uh from the STAR assessment in the high school, do you see the similar dip and bounce back? And you've already done the STAR assessment this year, right? So wondering for forecast, like if if the STAR stuff has tracked the young class stuff and like, can you sort of there, not that I I don't like. But for some stuff, if you say, oh, this kind of topic, our students are not doing well and focus on that. But I. You know, I think you should be, you guys have so many kinds of data sets and do sort of the formal of those uh on the process. I'm just wondering if the STAR assessment would predict like the.
Yeah, I think, you mean specifically for the high school?
Well, I'm only here for the region, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, so the STAR data at the high school, I think, bears out the things that we've been talking about here. Um, specifically, we start pick up um students who are at need of intervention. So by ninth grade, which is when it's the start of the high school, pretty much we already know about kids who are there. And um our scores are pretty good at at the high school level. Um, the pandemic really hurt in reading and math, but the younger kids of so so.
You didn't see, so well, I saw at end class that like in high school, there was some, for now, like there was a big shift, sorry. But it's.
No, like that second, first, second and third grade. In reading, I saw a twelve point difference, you know, that was huge. Not.
I have a question. In your next steps on number two, it says to analyze the grade level and school data to determine if there are gaps in the curriculum. So a couple of things, I'd be curious to know if if you make some determination that that might be the case in some things. Um, one, just personally, I'd be so interested to see that. Um, and then secondarily, what do you then sort of do? I mean, I can't imagine, or maybe you do, like you scrap a curriculum. Like, how do you then take that information and make it actionable in a way that benefits students that we would see? Or that we might be able to like help with and have impact with? Are there, you know, fiduciary aspects to that? I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's really done at the local level. So uh I'll use the example of middle school math. Um, during the pandemic, we were not to teach only the power standards. And there were very few uh geometry standards in dependent power standards. So our teachers put the teaching of geometry after the taking of them. A lot of places did that because um they were going to be on the test, but we still knew that we wanted kids to learn geometry. So that's an example where the data is going to say, oh, you're slightly lower in geometry than in the other secrets of math. Um, so that's really something that the teachers do. They'll, you know, switch the order of units, uh sprinkle more geometry in, for example, which is that they've already done the correction for this year based on last year's data.
I think one thing that I know I answered a lot since the pandemic and returning um is permission for teachers to not stick with the standard curriculum if they can see kids had skills that needed to be filled first. And I know our consistent message was always, well, you've got to meet the kids where they were at. So teachers have been backfilling, and I think that's some of why we're seeing such progress. We didn't just push through a curriculum that's on paper because it's on paper. Teachers really look to see where kids were and use both what they were seeing on a daily basis and the data to slow down and backtrack and fill those gaps as they, as the kids have come up through. So it's great to see we're getting a little more more on track with what's on paper. So we're back to some of what our standard curricula are. But I can't say enough about what this teaching staff has done to meet kids where they were at a very individual level for the last two years. Um, really amazing.
On the kind of story from Carlisle, he just went through this, right? I mean, and so there are things, like two years ago, Carlisle revamped math curriculum entirely in middle school. As a result of like, because the M S scores were not showing where they were supposed to be, right? So, okay, great. But when you guys look at these scores, you also think about questions that are asked of what are the things for are not doing well on it? One of the questions that the third graders were asked was to finish a story and like they had to write first of all, which didn't go well, right? I don't think. But they had to finish a story from the perspective of a particular character in like a third grader.
Yeah.
And and so that's the kind of thing that like Carlisle looked at and he's like, uh, you know, like.
We're actually okay with that. That performance is okay, but yeah. You're right, Sarah, that's.
I. And. Asking a lot. Right on. If people are in uh for third grade.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. And that's what data analysis is all about.
Right. Yeah.
Think about it.
Yeah. Okay. Interesting. No.
This is great. I love the level of detail. I I actually love that it's a, you know, sixty something slide deck because you know what? There's so much in there and and everybody sees different things in the deck. So I really appreciate having it all. And, you know, obviously we've spent a tremendous amount of work doing this, so we certainly appreciate all that. So thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions before we move on?
Yep, go ahead.
So this is my first time seeing this data, like all all of this. So I spent a trying to understand, I am not the the data nerd that you and Carrie are, and I really respect that you two are, so thank you. Um, I have a couple of just like basic questions and then I have a couple of like bigger picture questions. Um, my, just like a basic question, could you explain the accountability score for me? I didn't quite understand what that was. And in particular, um, I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand is why it looked like all of the elementary schools and CCHS were like in the high nineties and then the middle school was in mid seventies. I I was just trying to understand that.
And give us a slide number if you.
I don't remember.
Oh, I have it. Sorry, actually, mine doesn't have slide numbers on it.
All right.
It's like one, two, three, four, five, six, slide six, maybe ish. Six is square.
Yeah, it's supposed to the front. Yeah, it's um twenty twenty two accountability information.
Yeah, and just so um everybody is aware, the accountability measures used to be really important before twenty nineteen, but we have been held harmless since the pandemic. So while they're reported, uh, it's not, there's no um repercussions from them. So um that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is, in the middle school, I'll just remind you, we had a technical glitch on the second day of the math testing. So some kids were counted as absent um because they've got kicked out of the process.
Right, so this is part of the federal accountability formulas? So there's a bunch of, a number of factors that are weighted into the formula based on that is how you get your score.
Carrie, all the, yeah, all this information is also on the desk school profiles page. So you, a lot of it, not all of it, but a lot of it can be down there so you can even look back at the years.
Right.
Okay.
So it factors in uh the kid, number of kids who participated, the number that obviously their performance and a few other variables that we don't always agree are weighted appropriately. Uh, participation being one of them, as you can see that we took a significant hit for the way the technical glitch played out.
What is, I I you might have mentioned it, what if it's on a score of like it's ninety nine, it's a percentage? These are largely good at ninety nine, like this is a good story. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then and then the outlier is the middle school.
Which you attribute to the technical glitch.
And probably if we weren't held harmless, we'd be appealing to the state about the participation rate, given the technical glitch. We're on record with them about that. Okay.
Okay, that I that would just seemed like an outlier and I was just trying to understand that. So that makes sense. Um, and I guess my other question is about, um, and I think you've gone into this a little bit, but I'm curious to hear a little bit more about the middle school math numbers and then the middle school math scores. Um, is are you, is that, that is simply the glitch? Are there other things that you're looking into as to what that might attribute to that? Or is that, what's your thinking there?
Yeah, I would say it's three things. One, the most important is the glitch. Yeah, because that was out of two days of testing that affected one. So it was about half the time. So with that, pretty amazing. The second um piece is, I mentioned about the teaching of geometry and putting it after the testing. Because if you dig down in the um middle school math scores, that's the area that was um hurt the most. Um, and so that's been al- also corrected. Um, and then the last I would say is um when we, I think someone that would say are, when you align um these scores with the other internal measures that we give specifically are um our kids were actually getting stronger. So um, you know, I think it's.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, it's really a great point that um that Sarah made about having multiple measures uh is really important because of something like the technical glitch and how it can and make us look.
So if, so you might expect to see some even further rebound next year.
Absolutely.
With, provided that our internet is strong.
It's incredibly reliable, reliable, usually, even in the middle.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, that's interesting. So that'll be something to watch for.
Yeah. And we've seen it, as I said, already in the STAR scores, so I'm.
Yeah. So the stories are not aligned.
Yeah.
The STAR story and the M S story, interesting.
That's really reassuring. Yeah, and because it does seem like that, you know, dip and then bounce back has been, you know, pretty consistent. You know, throughout K through five and then in CCHS and the middle school is really just middle school math even, um, the outlier.
So that was not a fun day at the middle school.
Yeah, I bet. Um, but that that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Great, can you call up some accountability show in the middle school? It wasn't in my link to. Also, thank you.
Excuse me. At the SCF store data, some of the sub information is there is that the president needs to. Yeah, so um sometimes um the department doesn't report it with the best choose lower than twenty or ten, depending on what it is. Um, and sometimes even when they report future slots because they're trying to valid it or pre-gift.
So they don't report it for SGP subgroups and at twenty? And then for some reason, they changed the number to ten at the achievement level proficient subgroups. I couldn't, I don't know why they.
Still exist by.
Why it's ten in one place and twenty in another.
Any group under ten, there's no sort of difference. And then under with a number of us in town.
Actually, SGP is twenty.
Right, yeah.
Performance is ten.
Composite score and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And why is a mystery. Classic.
Right. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah.
Yes, and feel free to stay, but also we're not offended if you leave. I have to just say that. Uh, okay.
Carrie, where's Carrie based?
Sure. Here, here. Yeah. And Carrie, I did see her also in the Instagram and Steam Labs. That was exciting too for middle school. Like, I mean, that's fantastic.
And sixth graders, we see them once this year.
And that's great.
That's been fantastic.
That's great. Thank you.
To counter our spreadsheet.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Time, a little spreadsheet time.
Thanks so much. Hey, thank you. All right, and now we're on to advertising on the CCHS campus. So I will just bring us all back to date uh with any new information. I have reached out to Robin Grace, who is part of the tennis booster club and Steve Suarez, who is part of the baseball booster club, to just get a little bit relevant background. Because I think we had a few other questions last week, so I can hopefully fill in any blanks for anyone. Um, and I will start with, I'm going to start with tennis. Let me just pull this up for one second because I have to reference my email. Um, so in terms of the tennis scoreboard, um, and I'm just going to read right from Robin's email. We confirmed a five thousand dollar donation with a five year commitment by McWalter Volunteer Insurance Agency. And there is a proof that I believe you all should have of the tennis scoreboard. The scoreboard is sitting in a warehouse waiting to be installed. Aaron's been working to coordinate the install with Lyman and Company, and we hope that the cement and install will be done over the next two weeks because, of course, the ground is freezing. So we did approve uh last December the scoreboard. And we told them to go and fundraise and find the rest of your money and we sent them on the merry way. So we did that and now um they have an actual sponsor. So we just really need to go through the process of approving that. So that would be tennis. Baseball, I actually got a slideshow, um, but but not everything is completely relevant. So the sign predates uh Aaron Jankus, it predates Mark Hernandez, who's the varsity baseball coach, and also predates Laurie Hunter. So around twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, Acton Toyota had the sign. So last year, they went back to Acton Toyota and they actually asked for more money. And they weren't willing to give more money, so they went out and they found another sponsor. So the sponsor for the CCHS baseball sign, and this is again a parent organization that there was a sign there, so they were simply thought they were going to replace it. They want to make some money for the program and replace it. And so that was replaced by Route Two Athletics, which is actually an organization that works with Concord Youth Baseball. So a lot of our kids participate in Route Two Athletics, so it seemed like an appropriate sponsor for the baseball scoreboard. And last year, or this year, I should say, they are, the money they raised from that was for uh, it it wasn't for all of these things, but they did fund, I'll tell you what they fundraised for. Baseball's batting helmets, a new pitching machine, pitching and field safety screens, offseason clinics for players, offseason conditioning and weight training, outfield fence repair and installation, stipends for assistant coaches. So both of these booster clubs are doing significant fundraising for their teams because the budget does not cover the costs of the sports program. So it's really just what it comes down to. Would you agree?
Covers a lot of the costs, but it doesn't.
Not all of them. Um, so the, so that is the baseball. Um, so the, so that is the baseball scoreboard and the tennis scoreboard. So in addition to that, I feel an obligation to let the athletic director know, the coaches know, the booster clubs know what our policy is. Cause I do think this was just a simple, uh, I don't think anyone knew they needed to come to us for approval. So I would like to tighten that up and send a copy of our policy along with, I'm just gonna scroll down um on yours, cause it's pulled up here, um, along with specifically what we do for temporary advertising and to remind everybody that it's temporary. It can be hung during the event or the season, whenever it needs to be hung. And the, the one part that we also do need to clean up is that if parents hang up a sign, parents should be taking the sign down. It should not be the responsibility of our staff to do that. So, and, and it usually does lie within the staff, cause I think this summer Erin did remove all the signage and we definitely don't want that to happen, cause it, our policy states it should not be school personnel doing it.
So this is attached, so we attached the memo, I'm, the memo, the agenda, um, we took a
It's not actually in the agenda, I don't
No, it is.
Is it already on there?
It up, yes.
Oh, it's already in there, okay.
The most recent agenda that is on like our school committee website. Um, I took a quick stab literally yesterday morning, this morning, I don't remember when, at pulling together a letter um from us that could be used to these and sent to these athletic coaster, uh, coaches, boosters groups, um, that just sort of says, you know, welcome to your season, if you're gonna pursue sponsorship opportunities, um, you need to keep abreast of our policy, policies included. And then as Champ, as Crazy said, we have two types of advertising, temporary and permanent. If you're gonna do temporary advertising, here's what you're responsible for. And if you are interested in having some sort of permanent advertising, here is sort of the order of operations to get that done, so that this can be used, um.
So in the past, even, what do we define as temporary?
Temporary like vinyl banners. So all those vinyl banners, yep. The duration, um, it's not defined, it says at the conclusion of the event.
I don't think that is our policy.
Our policy? Let me just read it.
So I think like, I can find, I was combing through the minutes to try to find the voting to uh approve the scoreboard. And I did find a um motion for approving temporarily at baseball. And they said it must be temporary. You don't have to have temporary written on it all of it.
Can you, where, where did you find that? Sorry. Okay, if you could set a sentence, twenty sixteen, so temporary is something that's removable?
It says, in our policy, it says temporary advertising of commercial products, services, or logos will be permitted on a limited basis during the time of and just prior to a sporting event or during the time of or just prior to a club activity, so.
So that's trying
The event.
So specifically the vinyl um banners that go, I think, on the baseball fence during the baseball season. And those are hung for the whole season.
Right, and the school committees that, that year, same with softball.
So we haven't approved them since probably twenty sixteen.
I know, and that's because we have we've had a lot of change, right? But I think we need to, I don't feel comfortable just being very open-ended about what's temporary and what's permanent.
Well, I, I look at temporary as removable, permanent you need to remove with tools, et cetera. I mean, I, I do look at temporary as, it's vinyl. That's my opinion.
I, I would prefer no advertising on the campus. That's my, I think it just could get out again, and I don't even really know now how we're gonna say no, even another permanent. Um, request, because we, we didn't vote yes to the request.
Well, it's definitely something that we're gonna have to vote on. Um, we can grant exception to advertising. Um, and I do think that our sports programs do rely on some of this advertising and it is for the benefit of kids in the program. And so, you know, we're, the people that are advertising are typically local places or they are related to the sport, you know, we don't have, you know, app computer coming in to advertise. I don't think it looks like that. And the advertising on that baseball fence, in my opinion, it is for the betterment of the baseball and softball programs to fund some of those assistant coaches. So the only people that we, I mean, the people at the game see it and certainly people walking through the campus might see it, but I deem it as being part of what the program needs to really run effectively.
Hey Carrie, you had mentioned possibly looking at, at these, at this policy and, and making some, I mean, I think I'm
Yeah.
As a, a big learning lesson, right? Like, I'm starting to ask, like, I have a question with the stuff that the booster clubs raise. Are we supposed to accept those as, yeah, sorry, no?
They pay directly, so you, you're not directly involved. We don't man, we don't have any insight to their money and how they spend.
Thanks, the difference Maybe some possessions of the school or like, or if they're paying for an assistant coach who gets paid through the school. I'm just, I mean, this is
We can look at it.
We can look at it, but I mean, I'm, I'll just tell you, my experience, you know, is being part of a booster club is they have their own bank accounts and then they do their payments to assistant coaches. And they're five oh one three C three, so they are all
They're not fundraising off of our profit. That's the big difference. That's a huge difference in my mind. There's, we're, we're selling a spot on our campus.
Well, and, and I, I guess my opinion is, yeah, we can talk about it, but
I don't think
But we do need to vote on these right now, because
We need to deliberate first.
We did that last time, I think.
Well, deliberating now, as well. We wanna get this right. People have referred to previous actions as vague or even omissions, so we're trying to clean this up. I don't think anybody disputes the idea that we are trying to serve the needs of kids. Uh, but not every advertiser that we have had up on the school property and since removed have been local firms. We have national firms, US Bank, Merrill Lynch, and so on. So it's not quite as easy as, as we might be suggesting. I have great reservations about a letter that goes out interpreting our policy if we don't even agree on what our policy means. Policy is policy, and if we can't agree on what temporary means. Does temporary mean it's on a piece of paper or a piece of plastic? Some people say so. Or does it mean length of time? Some people say so. So if we have to deliberate, let's deliberate.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's clean this up.
I don't And I think we'll do that at our policy.
Let's just go to, because you say these, these signs, for example, right? They have, they are permanent in the sense that they can, right? Like, the, the sign that has the root to athletics, right? If you were to, in five years, if there was a new sponsor to come around, right? You would take that, we're talking commitments like of five years, which is different, again, than permanent, right? This isn't imperfectly, it's not that that sign is
Right, yeah.
Right.
Not only do you not know what temporary is, you don't know what permanent is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right, and so that's
Fixed, or yes.
It should be fixed.
Brought up so many questions about so many issues that we're not going to, I personally, myself, we're not gonna imprint all out tonight, right? We have two groups who have raised money, uh, you know, are, are working. We know that the tennis scoreboard, for example, we can have, I think, tournaments that we couldn't have before, right? Opportunities, opening up opportunities in Root Two Athletics, these opportunities for students and all that kind of stuff, right? We're here where we are, but I, I do think it's brought up, at least for me, a bunch of questions about like, what's temporary? What's permanent? And like, and, and what, and then, and like, how the donations came in for this scoreboard, a lot of questions, because that one, they didn't factor on, sir, right? They, they, they were just dropping checks off in the business office, and so
No, the tennis scoreboard, they do have a five oh one three C that they use, now they do, yes, yes.
Just dropping checks off in the business office, right? Like, so this whole, the same full process has brought up a bunch of things that we just need to clean up, I think, right?
And this is, Carrie, this is on our next policy.
Sorry, I've had my hand up, but I realize you can't see me.
I'm sorry.
I, so I have a cou- a couple thoughts on this. I, this is definitely on our agenda and um, like, there are multiple changes that MASC is recommending around advertising. So I think, I think Court and Cynthia are right that we need to deliberate this. I just wonder if we can like decouple the tennis and the baseball situations from the broader issue and, and hold off until we have Dorothy and also um like a broader kind of communications with the community. I, I mean, that's what all of K is. So um, we'll have a conversation about what all of those looks like, including advertising at our next policy meeting. I don't know if that's possible, but that's just my, my question. And the other thing, the other comment I would make is on this letter, um, I think the letter is like, is perfectly fine. I would just ask that we not re- reiterate any policy that we're likely going to be updating.
Right, and I wouldn't suggest, if we're gonna
Yeah, I know it's a draft, but like, maybe just wait until we have a new, a new policy and then push it out, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think for tonight's purposes, I think this is sort of what Sarah's saying, like, we need to, you know, make this, the vote on these two specific baseball and tennis based on the policy we have today and work towards, to Court's point, cleaning up the policy at the next meeting of the policies submitted.
No, I think this has to be done uh tonight, if in fact we wanna clean up the policy and perhaps make uh exceptions to it, which is already embedded in policy, our prerogative or responsibility to decide what exceptions get named. Um, if, if for six years we've been uh letting things happen, uh, as, as a matter of fact, uh, what's the harm of letting them continue to happen for another couple of months and, and get this done properly? What's, what's, what's the urgency?
Well, cause tennis
Going on for six years.
I understand that, so tennis is very concerned that they can't get their scoreboard in because now they think that we are not gonna approve it and they have a commitment with a sponsor. And when we first approved the scoreboard, it said, I'm not gonna remember what it said exactly in our proof. Court dedication is what it said at the bottom, which, which, but we didn't ask either.
We didn't
And we said, go right ahead.
Dedication as like, they do Mr. Spence for the, you know
Well, so, so I will say what Robin Grace has said is that she's made that commitment so far and that was, and we told her, go out and fundraise the rest of it, right? So I do think that on the tennis scoreboard in particular, we, we have to vote that cause that is going to be installed and how do they install it without us approving it?
And specifically, they're seeking a five-year commitment for an advertisement going with Walter Insurance. And their stated intent is to contribute $5,000 of those involved proceeds toward our athletic specific expenses. Would that be correct?
It's, the $5,000 is to complete the scoreboard. Tennis, it is for the remainder of the scoreboard. It's very specific.
Sorry, can you give me all that again?
Tennis is for the remainder of the scoreboard. The $5,000 was to finish out the rest of the funds they needed to complete the scoreboard.
Yeah, do you remember they had all the, they had extra funds from their pickleball tournament? But, and that I think was like thirty, well, maybe it was like $35,000 or something. The scoreboard was gonna cost forty-one, I think.
You did six thousand dollars.
So this is how they did.
With our first pickleball tournament, you anticipate that when we do our next pickleball tournament, we will easily bring in that remaining, six thousand dollars. And then something changed.
So they got a thousand.
From, they got a thousand from the pickleball tournament and, and so, and that's
Needed a
Sponsor, I guess.
So what then would a motion sound like that captured these necessary details? And made this uh something that qualified as an exception, so it doesn't uh drive further policy uh with reverse engineering? What it sound like? What are, what are the details? What would be, would be, I'm not the most, but I think we uh backed ourselves in this corner. I just don't wanna have to create additional problems.
Well, I would entertain a motion to uh approve the tennis scoreboard with McWalter Insurance as the sponsor on it as an exception to our policy KHB.
Do we have to put in the amount and the time period? Like the, in the
Sure.
We can, I don't think we have to.
Sure, looks like that the, is that equally, is that a spot that's sellable again in five years?
Yes, so it is a name plate. So, so there are two plates that go on the scoreboard. The first, the scoreboard is lit. Yeah, it's a slideable plate, so in five years that plate comes out.
Or if we follow the notice is, if they find a higher bit.
Digital and it'll circulate.
So that is not digitized. And then in, and then I guess I would, I would also say in terms of baseball, it is, it, that was already committed. That money was already committed, which is why I would like to approve both of these tonight.
And I just wanna clarify, you do approve all the equipment that's come through or any repairs? I think the one place we're gonna need to figure out clarity is the assistant coach stipends. Everything else you've seen, so the base, you've seen the work they've done to improve the field, you've seen, yeah, so football just
We took a donation from football, yes.
Just wanted to be sure I said that clearly, yeah. Yes, yeah, you see all those.
I think, that was, that was the question.
Yeah, the intent is you see all those. It's the assistant coach stipends that's probably the trickier one we haven't figured, yeah.
Researchers don't realize, right? It's like, oh, they need, you know, chin pads. So everybody chip in five bucks for chin pads and they just pick them out. And I don't think anybody thinks nobody's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, more communication and process.
Yeah, sure. So, do we have someone willing to move the motion or to make a, blink that motion?
Okay, so it would be, I can't.
We have to start with, make a motion to make an exception to our policy, right? And approve, what do you, it doesn't, again, it's permanent, temporary, temporary. And prove, approve advertising for McWalter Insurance for a five-year term. And get five-year commitment for $5,000 for the tennis scoreboard that is being installed.
In a minute. Yeah, put the terms right in it, I agree.
Is that five years from installation?
Oh, yeah, with the expiration, you should, yeah, you should put an expiration, like the term of commitment should expire and
We need to find out, uh, we would need to find out the exact time that
For now, just saying.
Uh, to the terms agreed upon by McWalter and the Friends of Tennis.
Who said five years?
Five years.
Five years from installation.
Installation, okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's when their advertising really starts.
Yeah, exactly, from when it goes on, it's five years from then, okay. Do we have a second?
I'm gonna try and make it easy for your school committees.
Yes, I appreciate that.
On our searchable drive.
I know, it's, yes.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion. Do we have, thank you. Yes, yes, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think uh we should send a message, as I'm sure the chairs will, but uh we address all the boosters to um, understand that we're trying to support kids while adhering to policy and uh there's nothing more to it.
Yep.
And we're appreciative.
And I will um send a message back to Robin Grace, who is, and she would have been here tonight, but her kids are home and she's picking up at the airport, et cetera, same with Steve. So it's, uh, so thank you to the tennis boosters, right? All right, no further discussion, so let's take a vote and we must vote by roll call.
So this is just for tennis?
This is just for tennis.
And this is not one that anticipates any follow-up around assistant coaches, that would be the baseball side.
Yes, well.
Yeah, and I don't know that you wanna hold up the vote on that.
No, no, because baseball, he specifically, yeah.
Whether we've really closed this chapter.
Yes, and I have given you a laundry list of baseball, but really it was to fund the, if he's reporting annually, it was for the pitching machine. Okay, so, roll call please.
Anderson of Sting.
Who's I?
Marana Y.
Rainya.
Rank and I.
With I, Wilson I.
Okay, thank you. And then on to baseball, so we are going to make, Sarah, I'm gonna ask you to be prepared to, to make a motion on the baseball scoreboard.
I make a motion. Attention, converge to Attention, uh, to our advertisement for the first policy that authorized
Root Two Athletics?
Athletics, uh, advertisement for a term also five
Five years. Five years and it.
From the date.
From the date of installation. Which was in, on April, I believe, 16th of 2022. So it started April is when it got hung. Nope, just this past April. Yep.
For $4,500.
Okay. All right. And again, thank you to Friends of Baseball and any other discussion about baseball.
We know we'll get a bit of a follow-up, so we have context on coaching.
Yeah, but this funding was for the pitching machine, not coaching. I I don't, I'm not sure that.
We'll do some.
Okay, we'll do a little homework on that. Okay.
Anderson, I, I.
This is Regent.
This is Regent.
I say for the Regent.
Marana Y. Regent.
Maybe I for Regent.
Rank and I for Regent.
With I for Regent.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I may, I know it's a little bit like technically, but are you a fellow on this?
Thank you.
It's not digitized and it's not, it's not worth 30 grand, but you'll take it.
Just to recap, we're not sending it.
Oh, God, no, no, until we clean up the policy.
No, we're cleaning up the policy first.
We already jammed it.
So it was in our.
Exactly.
Pretty much. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a draft.
You can take it out. Yeah. Or I can put grass.
Just right.
Typos in it too, I saw. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure that Erin is definitely listening and she does such a good job at minutes that she'll put that in there. Okay. Yes, just rewind again a few times.
Live your meetings a couple of times.
And thank you to Erin. I'll just thank her publicly again. Okay, on to the last thing that we have tonight is the vote to approve the out-of-state day trips for two basketball tournaments there in Rhode Island. And this came to you, you know, just this week, but.
Yeah, Aaron Jankas approached me yesterday. They're trying to fill out the basketball schedule, which sometimes has a little flurry here at the end. This is probably the simplest thing. It's not an overnight trip. It's literally go to Rhode Island and come back, play ball. They can go to the other side of Massachusetts. You wouldn't have to approve it, but they do. They have to go to Rhode Island. Yes, exactly. So we're just hoping for an approval tonight if you're willing.
I'll make a motion. The Concord Carolina School Committee votes to approve CCHF for first basketball team day trips on December 2nd, 10. 22 and December 11, 2022 to Warwick and North Kingston, Rhode Island to a basketball tournament.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, just to kind of picky technical, are we approving one or two tournaments here?
It's a trip each day. The 10th is to Warwick and the 11th is to North Kingston.
Right, okay. I know, I know that part. I was just curious. There was reference to there being two tournaments and then language that.
That's my take. Same turn. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck to the basketball team. Okay, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marana Y.
Rainya.
Rank and I.
With I, Wilson I.
All right. And that.
Well.
Yes, that's all we have. So.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I hope you don't have to travel far.
We do, we do have to adjourn. I know, exactly, exactly. So I didn't. Motion to adjourn and we have to by roll call.
No, we, no, we, don't we? We just turned match up. I think I just heard a roll call.
Okay, perfect. All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Carrie, enjoy your trip.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, Carrie.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Ayesha, I know you're with us still in the car.